Good evening. This study session of the Board of Education for March 9th, 2015 is called to order. I'd like to extend a warm welcome to everyone present and to our television viewers. Our study sessions are generally limited to receipt of information from staff, discussion of that information, and review of resolutions prior to vote, but at times we do conduct votes during study sessions. Any item that will be voted on this evening has been posted as required by state law. The meeting is being televised live and will be replayed throughout the next two weeks. Please check the Board website for replay times. This meeting is also being streamed live on our PPS TV services website. Student Representative Jess Wallace absent this evening. So, before we begin with our agenda tonight, just want to remind everyone in the room and watching at home about the town hall meetings that are being held to hear from the community about your budget priorities. So there are still six meetings to be held. They all begin at 6:00 PM, and they are going to be March 11th at Cleveland High School, March 12th at Madison High School, March 16th at Lincoln, April 13th at Wilson, April 21st at Franklin, and April 27th at Roosevelt. So do please plan to attend one of those town halls and share your budget priorities with us. We had a great meeting. Servalists were there last week at Jefferson, and it was a really nice dialogue and conversation with folks who came out. So that was really valuable for us, and I hope felt like a good use of their time as well. So with that, we'll start with public comment. Ms. Houston, do we have anyone signed up?
[inaudible]
Great.
And our first two speakers, Jonah Carpenter and Alicia Brown.
Welcome. So come on down, and while you're getting settled, I'll just go through our usual instructions. So thanks so much for taking the time to come and attend the meeting, providing your comments to us. We value you being here. Look forward to hearing your thoughts, reflections, and concerns. We'll be actively listening and reflecting on your comments, but not responding to any comments or questions during this time. We have asked Board Manager Roseanne Powell, who's sitting right over there, to follow-up on the issues raised during public testimony. So she's available afterward if you'd like additional information about how the Board might respond. So guidelines for public input emphasize respect and consideration of others. Complaints about employees should be directed to the Superintendent's Office as a personnel matter and won't be heard in this forum. You have a total of three minutes to share your comments. Please begin by stating your name and spelling your last name for the record. During the first two minutes of your testimony, the green light will be on. When you have one minute left, the yellow light will go on, and then when the red light goes on, we respectfully ask that you wrap up your comments. So again, thank you so much for being here, and you may begin.
Thank you. My name is Jonah Carpenter, C-A-R-P-E-N-T-E-R. I'm a special education teacher at James John Elementary and a self-contained focus program for third through fifth grade students with social and emotional disabilities. I'm here to share with you our experience this past year as the Special Education Department and the district began closing the K-2 focused programs in attempts to mainstream these students. At the end of last year, our SED building team all met with the Director of Special Education, and we were told that the K-2 focused program would remain in place for the 2014-15 school year. We were told that the paraprofessionals and critical one-on-one support staff would remain in place. The department was aware that the numbers of students placed in this program were low. However, they understood the high needs of these students, the projected incoming students, the high needs of our building, and the 3-5 focused classroom, so all staff would remain in place. We were told that as we moved towards inclusion for students placed in more restrictive settings, staff could be utilized as the building determined to support these students. Unfortunately, three days before school started, we were told that three paraprofessionals would not be in place. No rationale was provided. We were left to scramble, causing a big setback that absolutely worked against the goals of inclusion for all students. Two months later, the department did close the K-2 focused program and remove the teacher, again with only three days for us to plan. This was incredibly disruptive to the students this teacher was serving, not only the focused program, but the other students with behavioral needs she was supporting as well. It was also disruptive to the general ed teachers, supporting these students, and the non-disabled students who also experienced this transition. The lack of support from the department limits progress towards inclusion for all students and has forced us to make difficult decisions. My team is routinely placed in untenable circumstances where we need to choose between the better of bad options regarding student and staff safety. We cannot progress with the current supports in place. When the district does respond, it is reacting to repeated disruptions and dangerous incidents as opposed to thoughtfully preventing safety concerns and planning for success by having appropriate supports in place. How are we to include students who are ready when the only staff available are consistently supporting students who desperately need one-on-one support to stay safe at school? This leaves no support for students who are ready to experience inclusion opportunities. My team would like nothing more than to see these students succeed in an inclusive, mainstream, general education environment, yet we are struggling to meet the current needs of students on a consistent basis based on current supports. In order to close this gap and help these students succeed, we need direct involvement from district leadership. These students deserve more support, not less, as the district rolls out these massive changes in services. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Alicia Brown, B-R-O-W-N, and this is my third year as a Learning Center teacher and Special Education Case Manager at Roosevelt High School. Over the last three years, our team has fought to establish an inclusive push-in model and have seen special education students' passage rates increase by double-digit percentage points in core content classes. Our district's new special education redesign compromises our success. It has decreased the already deficient support for our students, increased our workloads, and threatens to weaken the success of our accomplishments. This redesign is flawed. IDEA states that students with special needs should only be removed when the nature or severity of the disability of a child is such that the education in regular classes with the uses of supplementary aids and services cannot be achieved satisfactorily. Our students can access the least restrictive environments, but only when given access to the supports and services they need. This redesign had made our services less satisfactory. Currently, my building's five Learning Center teachers and 200 students share only one par educator who is often designated to tasks similar of a campus security agent. This has resulted in an increased disproportionality in the exclusionary discipline of students with special needs in our building. Our students need par support to access general education classes and have none. Also, students currently have no step-down process for transitioning into our building. They arrive and are thrust into a model they are not yet prepared for. At the beginning of this year, we had hasty meetings for four students who came to us from mental health facilities, focused behavior placements, and residential facilities. Only one of these students remains. These students needed more transition support and got none. The 3D identification process requires case managers to complete paperwork that solely increases our workloads. It has no follow-up, seeks information easily found in our information systems, and arrives too late to support students. We have had nine students identified for the 3D process because of academic attendance and discipline concerns. Of these, two passed seven of eight of their classes at semester, and five were flagged after they left our building. One had three discipline infractions, nearly perfect attendance, and passed seven of his eight classes, while I have a list of nearly 30 students with similar or more significant attendance, behavior, and academic needs who have not been flagged. The 3D process could work, but only if it identifies students with the most significant needs and provides commensurate support in our buildings. Here's what we need to fix these issues. One-to-one par support for each Learning Center case manager. Transition teams that include students, families, district representatives, and members of the old and new placement staff. A 3D process that brings support to students. Designated special education coaches or department heads in each building. A district-wide discipline policy that involves student support teams and disciplined decisions. Redesigning our services should not be done in a way that undermines or increases our workloads, diminishes the safety of our buildings, or decreases the supports and services for our students. We need a redesign that puts more professionals in our buildings, not more paperwork on our desks.
Thank you very much.
Our next two speakers, Shalyn Joseph and Ben Grosscup.
Go ahead, welcome.
My name is Shalyn Joseph, J-O-S-E-P-H. Good evening, Board Directors and Superintendent Smith. I come to you tonight to speak about concerns regarding the current special education redesign. Recently, you have listened to formal presentations from the Director and Assistant Director of Special Education in which special education redesign was touted as an aspirational plan which would bring services to students instead of sending them to programs that some perceive as exclusionary, use data-driven decision-making, and build capacity using school resources. You have heard many slick titles and descriptions in this redesign plan, such as Reach 2020, 3D, and SWIFT. First and foremost is my concern about the recent closure of behavior-focused programs and loss of services associated with these programs, such as licensed teachers and paraprofessionals. The U.S. Department of Education outlines required continuum of placement in Section 300.115B1, which states, "A continuum must include alternative placements such as regular classes, special classes, special schools, home instruction, and instruction in hospitals and institutions." In writing IEPs, site-based teams often have to dance around level of services, supports, and placement due to pressure from administration to not write paraprofessional support for students despite site-based teams identifying the need for paraprofessional support. My second concern is regarding the process and procedure which triggers services and supports for students. With the recent special education redesign in Portland Public, students are often placed in general education classrooms with limited or no supports to see if they can be successful. Of course, they often fail academically or behaviorally. An alarming trend I am witnessing is that frustrated and concerned teachers are asking special education teams if students need to be medicated because of unmet mental health and behavioral needs. Finally, I speak to my concern about how special education services are allocated to students. The recent special education redesign has undermined and taken away site-based decision even more than before in favor of newly-formed, non-site-based district teams using the 3D approach in which attendance and behavioral data in synergy is analyzed. In many schools, attendance and behavior incidents are not documented in synergy with fidelity, rendering the 3D method of analyzing unreliable. In closing, I will ask that the Superintendent and the Board please consider the negative impacts of special education redesign that have been presented. Does the special education redesign serve to meet our students' needs for intensive wraparound safety, mental health, and learning needs, or are our decisions being made based on catchphrases and buzzwords instead of actual efficacy?
Thank you very much.
To the members of the Board and Superintendent Smith, I appreciate being given your time. My name is Ben Grosscup, G-R-O-S-C-U-P. I have been teaching at Madison High School for 15 years, and I am a parent of a fifth and sixth grader in PPS. Since three minutes is not enough time to cover all of the issues surrounding the administration and use of data for the S-Back, I'm going to focus on one element, time. Something bothers me. This year, a high school junior is going to be exposed to between 14 and 22 hours of standardized testing with the ALPA, ACT, AP tests, OAKS science, and S-Back. I am confused as to how this enormous amount of time does not impact the required classroom minutes that have been mandated and furthermore, emystified by this egregious use of educational time. The block system, which was put into place because it was a good fiscal decision in a time of cut, 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 does not help our students in their learning. So much material is covered in a block, and when students miss a block, recovery of material is difficult. We're going to pull students out of eight to nine block classes on average just for the S-Back. Then academic priorities, SED and ELD kids will need more time, yet for them, the loss of instructional time is tenfold worse because of the support they need. I work with those kids, and it upsets me that we're going to subject them to this. It does not make sound educational sense at all. I ask the district to two things, or at least one of the two things. One, refuse to administer the S-Back to Portland students until there's clear evidence that the test will support student learning. And if unable to do that due to state and federal pressure, compose a letter to the community, state, and federal government stating the district's concerns about the implementation of the test and the impact the results are going to have on our community, highlighting that high-stakes standardized tests do not work because people don't live standardized lives. Number two, return the high school schedule to a seven-period modified block, thus allowing for better instruction of the Common Core standards. Frequent exposure and practice of content and skills. Also, this would go a long way to solving both class time and course-level requirements that have been mandated. In 2000, in the case against standardized testing, Alfie Cohen points out that our children are tested to an extent that is unprecedented in our history and unparalleled anywhere else in the world. I've gone to graduation every year. When I shake students' hands, I know we're doing good work. We can always do better. Still, the Title X kid who earns his diploma, the language learner with future plans, the young adult who is the first in the family to graduate, those hands and faces tell me that we're doing good work, and that good work is based on the relationships we develop with our students, the feedback we give them throughout their school experience, and the learning evident in their work. It is not based on their performance on standardized tests. I once saw a sign in a cafeteria that said, "A leader is someone who steps out of a line when everyone is marching to the wrong tune." Let's take this opportunity to be leaders and put a halt to this senseless dedication to high-stakes standardized testing.
Thank you very much.
Lastly, we have Stella Augustine and Christine Ivey.
Welcome, go ahead.
Hello, and good evening. My name is Stella Augustine, A-U-G-U-S-T-I-N-E, and I'm a ninth grader at Lincoln High School. Today, I'm here not only on behalf of the students that make up Lincoln, but all PPS students, teachers, and parents alike, to talk about a shared fear, smarter balance. I'd like to start off by reading the district's goal. By the end of elementary, middle, and high school, every student by name will meet or exceed academic standards and will be fully prepared to make productive life decisions. Starting this year, these newer tests replace OAKS tests, and with more than half of students expected to fall short of the meeting score, this is clearly not the smarter choice. First, placing raised academic standards on an already shaky system is not in the best interest of anybody. Students cannot be expected to exceed academic standards when we do not even have a reasonable teacher-to-student ratio. Teachers will end up spending the bulk of their time teaching the challenging format of the test rather than the content on it. District administrators will have to spend money on the test, which are estimated to cost $27.30 per student. These tests are estimates because a sizable portion of the cost is for test administration and scoring services that will not be provided by the smarter balance companies. Second is the implementation of the test. The smarter balanced exam is even more demanding than the old OAKS test, as it requires students to cite evidence, and is not solely multiple choice. About 90% of schools are on track with assessment training, though only 58% have given out practice tests or are on schedule to do so. Even though this test has yet to be taken officially for the first time, fear and stress have already been instilled in a significant amount of students, parents, and teachers. If you, the district, expect to carry out your goal of Portland students exceeding academic standards and making productive life decisions, then you owe it to us to rethink your decision to implement smarter balance. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So Christine Ivey, go Christine. Okay. All right. Thank you all very much for your comments. So tonight, we are going to hear the Superintendent's 2015 to 16 budget framework plan.
And Stephanie.
Yeah. So Superintendent Smith, take it away.
Thank you. Okay, so just by way of introduction for what's happening tonight as part of the overall budgeting process, in the last two years, what we've done is do a two-part budget presentation. So tonight, what I will be presenting is a framework for the overall budget process, but then the staffing plan, which allows us to move forward with staffing. I come back on the 31st of this month to present the entire budget, the rest of the budget. Okay, so just so you know, what you're hearing tonight is a framework for the overall budget and the staffing plan. So we have already had one Board Superintendent Budget Town Hall at Jefferson last week. Tonight is the school staffing plan to the Board. School staffing actually starts tomorrow, so the fact that I bring the staffing plan tonight allows us to go, start early with our staffing. This is a week earlier than last year and five weeks earlier than two years ago, which is really significant. This has been a huge effort on our part in order to get out and be able to do our staffing early. We then have a series of town halls, which Chair Atkins just read to you at the beginning, so three that will happen prior to the proposed budget and budget message on the 31st, and another three that happen after the proposed message on the 31st. And through all of this, there's opportunity to adjust, adjust things in the budget. So first, the framework, and part of what we use as the, as the framework for the budget, our vision, equity and excellence, every student, every teacher, every school succeeding. Our mission, every student by name, prepared for college, career, and participation as an active community member regardless of race or class. We have a strategic framework for the organization, which outlines our values for cultural transformation, prioritizes every student succeeding regardless of race or class, and then names effective educators, access to a rigorous, relevant program for all students, collaboration with families and communities, and individual student supports that allow students to access that rigorous, relevant program, and then underlying it, modernizing our infrastructure, and a stable operating model. So I put these in front of you. We've used these frameworks for a number of years at this point in terms of really saying these are the things that prioritize particularly in times of scarce resource. These are the frameworks that drive how we make decisions. This one is at organizational level. This one is at an individual school level, where we've named, here are the things that we believe at an individual school are the factors for success, and this is based on research within our own system. So equity at the center, professional learning communities, a positive school culture, quality assessments and quality instruction, which are inextricably intertwined, and then school and family partnership. So, and then finally, our measures of success at a, at a district level, where is the milestones framework, where we named progress at key transitions in a student's journey through Portland Public Schools, and they are, they are indicators that, that suggest success at the next level. So basically, they're predictive of success as you move through our system. And particularly, third grade, we know you are multiple times more likely to graduate on time if you are reading at grade level by the time you end third grade, and if you are entering 10th grade on track to graduate credit-wise, five times more likely to graduate on time. So these have been ones that we've used as key measures of success as students move through our system and indicators of the health of our system. We have also named three core priorities. One, that we want 100% of our third graders reading at grade level by the end of third grade, again because it predicts success as you move through the rest of, the rest of our system. We want to reduce exclusionary discipline, and we wanted to reduce the disproportionality of students of color being excluded, suspensions or expulsions by 50%, and we want to reduce our overall use of exclusionary discipline, meaning that students are sent away from school by 50%. And then the third one, we're working to accelerate the trajectory of increase in our four-year and five-year graduation and completion rates. Okay, so those are the key things we're trying to accomplish. The budget assumptions, so what are we looking at as we're building a budget this year? We're at the front end of a biennium, so while we're working to build a local budget, we also have our state working to identify what amount of funding will go into the state school fund. So that, that will be a moving target while we're in the process of trying to construct our budget. So our assumption going in is that we're, we are working to maintain current service levels, and what that assumes is that, that the state actually finally arrives at a $7.5 billion state school fund allocation for the biennium. And even at that level, 7.5 does not cover the entire cost of full-day kindergarten for Portland Public Schools. It's 3 million, there's a $3 million gap for what it costs us to provide full-day K. The 7.5 billion number has been identified as a statewide number for, that works for most districts across the state as a current service level and ability to implement full-day K number. Secondly, for Portland, we have a recently renewed local option, which increases our ability to hire teachers. And part of what the, the recent renewal did for us was no longer pull dollars out and send them to urban renewal, but allows Portland Public Schools to capture the full amount and have it directed to services for kids. So this is a big deal because it allows us to have additional dollars this year that support our schools. Secondly, assessed value on property is increasing, which gives us some additional dollars, and compression is unwinding, which gives us some additional dollars. So again, I'm going to tell you that this factor right here, the local option, is something unique for Portland, and only a small number of districts in the state have this that allows us to be adding at a point when we're unclear whether or not that will be true for districts across the state. So this is a unique feature for Portland and a thanks to our voters that we're in this position. And then finally, the budget we're constructing will assume, again, a 4.5% unassigned contingency, which is a level the Board has indicated that they are comfortable with. Okay, the other parts to the framework that we're looking at sustaining and building upon current levels of service to students, families, and schools. So looking at holding steady on things we've invested in the last couple budgets and continuing to build on that. Sustaining and building upon the strategies that impact our three priorities, so early literacy, reducing disproportionate discipline, and accelerating graduation and completion rates. Prioritizing strengthening capacity at schools and strengthening the organizational capacity to support schools. Okay, so those that I just went through are part of the framework for the overall budget. What I'm going to walk you through now is the plan for school staffing, so that's only a part of the budget. So school staffing, we're looking at building upon the work of the district staffing team from the last two years, and part of those overarching principles included investing some resources by school type and achievement needs and not solely by the number of students. So essentially, this is saying we are willing to differentiate resources based on the needs of schools and the needs of kids as opposed to just doing a numerical distribution of dollars. And then secondly, providing enough time for resources to shift culture and build capacity, meaning we're trying to hold steady from year to year with teams that have been built and strategies that are in place to allow them to have the time to see if they work. We're maintaining the equity formula within the staffing ratio allocation, and I'll walk you through in a minute exactly what that was, and this will be the third year that we're employing the equity formula. We will do non-formula additions to address specific considerations. So if in fact you've got a split campus that requires additional staff, we'll consider that and get, you'll get a non-formula add. There are some unique programs like Career Learning that would, would ask us to do a non-formula add. We have unique situations like schools that are actually at the implementation phase of the, with a bond, so a rebuild of their school, that we will allocate some additional staff, and then an attempt to minimize disruption. And then finally, each year, we set aside a pool of FTE to address specific program challenges, some of those, and you'll see when schools get their allocation, the thing that will move is if you have fewer students that show, that are actually showing up in your school than were, than last year, or than were projected, you will see a drop in FTE. In some cases, you're able to figure that out as a school. In other cases, you're no longer able to offer the core program, and you'll work with your senior director to figure out, okay, is there another solution to this? So just to say there would be, there could be situations, there's also, we also hang on to some FTE in a pool because kindergarten enrollment in the fall, we can't, we can predict so far, but we will generally want to be able to respond quickly if we have additional students who show up for kindergarten in the fall. The equity allocation, we hold back 4% of the ratio funding and then allocate it to schools with 15, and this has changed a little bit because we now have direct certification meal status, but it's based on free and reduced lunch. So schools with 15-plus free and reduced lunch by direct certification meal status would get additional allocation with the equity formula. Secondly, we hold back four, hold back and distribute 4% of the ratio funding to schools with 40% combined underserved. That includes students from one of the four historically underserved racial groups, black, Latino, Native American, and Pacific Islander, students qualifying for special education services, students qualifying for English as a second language services, and students eligible for free by direct certification meal status. So part of what this does is it allows us to have an additional bump of adult attention in schools with high-need student populations. So, and again, this is the third year that we'll be doing this equity allocation. The staffing formula is essentially, we do the ratio FTE that's assigned by school size first, add to that the ratio FTE using the equity allocation that I just described. Then there is a school-wide support table, which includes things like your principal, your assistant principal or vice principal, your counselors, your secretaries, all of the school staff that are required to actually run a school building. And then finally, non-formula FTE, like I just described, would would happen for specific special programming or schools that were undergoing bond work, those kinds of things, split campuses, which gives you your total general fund FTE, full-time equivalent. So this year, our priorities are sustaining classified staff and teachers that were added between 2013 and '15. Ensuring that our core program exists at all grade levels. Improving middle-grade elective offerings, and this is one we've heard a lot from people, is the need for improving our elective offerings in the middle grades. Additional college and career readiness staffing for middle grades and high schools. Adding counselors. We're doing a minimum of one, a full FTE at every school. Grades pre-K through eight, we're looking at a 400-to-1 ratio. And we're maintaining the high school at a 300-to-1 ratio. We've brought the high school, ratio was 400-to-1, went down to 350-to-1. It's now at 300-to-1, and we're working to hold steady at that ratio for high school. Secretaries, we're looking at a minimum of two full-time secretaries in every school building regardless of size. And then there's a ratio above the two full-time. And then educational assistance, we're looking at adding in kindergarten. And I'm going to walk you through how these connect to our priorities, but overall, that's what we're looking at in this year's staffing. Okay, a couple other factors for you to understand. So Portland State does a projection of our increase in students each year. We're looking at an additional 585 students in the coming year, which essentially gives us another 33 FTE for staffing our schools based on increase in student numbers. Our local option, and this is the additional parts of the local option like I described, will essentially, and this is the combination of the no longer sending it to urban renewal, increase in assessed value, and what was the last one I just?
Compression.
And compression unwinding, thank you. Gives us another 140 teachers that we will get to add. Okay, so our early literacy priority, 100% of third graders reading at grade level by the end of third grade. Two things. One, educational assistance support for kindergarten. We'd be adding 0.5 educational assistance in each kindergarten class for schools with 50% or more combined historically underserved. So that's 29 schools that would get this additional EA in kindergarten classes. We targeted early literacy support for focus and priority schools, which adds a teacher to work on early literacy and RTI response to intervention with both students and teachers. And this would impact eight schools. It's eight elementary schools actually and one middle school. Second one, reducing exclusionary discipline. And again, reducing disproportionality by 50% as well as reducing overall exclusionary discipline by 50%. The ads here that we believe will be an impact, adding counselors in K5s. So again, having a minimum of one full FTE in all of our K5s. We still have, last year, we had, we still had schools who didn't have counselors at all. So the current year that we're in, we added counselors to every school, but we still have schools that only have a partial, a 0.5, or not a full-time counselor. This year, we want to get to a full counselor in every school and then using the 400-to-1 ratio with K5s. With K8s and middle schools, same thing. At least one full-time counselor and a 400-to-1 ratio rounding up and down across arcades and middles. And then I put, again, the educational assistance support for kindergarten here in the impact on reduced exclusionary discipline because we believe that add will impact attendance in kindergarten. It'll impact our ability to, impact our reducing exclusionary discipline, and it'll impact our third-grade reading goal. The high school graduation and completion goal, accelerating the trajectory of increase in our four-year and five-year graduation and completion rates. We're looking at increasing elective offerings in the middle grades at both K8s and middle schools. This will add a 0.5 FTE at all of our K8s and a 0.2 in all of our middle schools. What we're, the guidance that we will provide to principals is that we'd like to prioritize art and music for schools that do not have middle grades art and music. Prioritize Avid if they are a school that is adding Avid in the coming year. And/or college and career readiness. So those would be the priority guidance for those elective ads.
What were the breakdown in the numbers, Carol, the teacher numbers? K8 and middle school, how many in each one?
So it's 0.5, 0.5 for the K8s and 0.2 at the middle grades. I mean, the middle school, middle schools. College and career readiness in the high schools. It's a 1.5 FTE add which allows them to, for schools, the high schools that are adding Avid, allows them to add Avid. If they're not adding Avid, a career, college and career readiness option. And then finally, 20 FTE that are to add courses in the high schools. So athletics, we're looking at having a middle school athletic director who moves to full-time. Having high school athletic directors who are currently in the school-wide staffing table at 0.5. Moving them to full-time and having them be responsible for managing cluster-wide athletics. We've been working to build programming back into the middle grades. This gives the high school athletic director in each cluster more oversight of the programming throughout the cluster. And the district-wide athletic director and high school principals will operationalize this in terms of both hiring and accountability and reporting structure. And then the last one is the one thing that we will be adding in our Multnomah County Education Service District resolution dollars is to move our outdoor school experience for sixth graders, expand it from three-day program to a full-week program. So it's the one thing that's a little bit different in here, but I wanted to make it visible because it's a thing that we're going to add in our service contract with the ESD. And it's one we have huge interest in always. Okay, strengthening school capacity to address all of our priorities. Looking at having school secretaries in K8s, a minimum of two full-time, 40-hour-a-week secretaries in all of our K8s. So some of this is topping off fractional positions and making them full-time. And then secondly, adding five full-time educational assistant substitutes and five full-time paraeducator substitutes. We've heard a huge amount of just need for this in terms of keeping stability in the system and a big deal to prioritize adding this. So we're excited about that one. Okay, so that is the plan, the staffing plan. What I wanted to walk you through is the state funding update because this is, as I said, we've got a moving target with, where we are with the state legislature and our overall funding. This, you can't read the words on this, but this is the chart that the combination of COSA, so the Confederation of Oregon School Administrators, OEA, the Oregon Education Association, the Oregon School Boards Association, and a number of educational advocacy groups have done this chart that represents statewide the different levels of funding. You've got this one, the lowest bar at 7.235, which represents the co-chairs' budget. The 7.5 billion one in the middle bar, which is what we've been calling fragile stability, which essentially represents current service levels for districts around the state and the ability to add full-day kindergarten. Okay, so this is the one that we used as our base budget assumption. And then the 7.875 billion represents the ability to do strategic ads that allow us as a state to accomplish the things we've been prioritizing as a state. So our conversation has really been about this is our ideal target of what we want to do and puts us on a glide path towards the quality education model. 7.5 billion is that we at least should hit this one, which has us at current service levels and funding the full-day K which the state has prioritized for this next school year. So our proposed budget, again, the entirety of which you will hear by the 31st, is based upon the 7.5 million appropriation from the legislature.
Million or billion?
Billion, billion. And the current status is the co-chairs' framework is 7.235 billion for K12. So right now, that's where we stand. And there's some, an effort to have this move quickly at this number. So just to say, move fast and be settled early with a number that's too low. According to ODE, this is more than $120 less dollars per ADMW than the current biennium for Portland. So this is a big deal. We get $120 less per student if we land at this number before accounting for cost increases. And this number is more than $13 million short of the cost of maintaining current service levels and paying for full-day K without having to draw away from programming for other grade levels in order to implement full-day kindergarten.
Carol, I thought you said under, even under the 7.5?
We're 3 million short.
We're still short.
We're still short.
Okay.
Just by what our alloc, so the...
So the middle one is not?
The middle one represents for the whole state. What is a, yeah, what's a current service level in implementing full-day K? For us, our allocation for implementing full-day K is still $3 million short. And again, that was an effort to, by all those parties to say this number represents, you know, the best shot for everybody across the state. Okay, what else is at risk if we end up at the shorter, at the smaller number? We have grants that have provided critical services to students. So our high school graduation initiative, our early warning system grant, we would absorb into the general fund and keep continuity of service to kids. So these are generally wraparound services that we would hold steady as opposed to have them be a cliff because they're part of our services to kids. The other one is we have an opportunity this next year to have two leveraged partnerships with Multnomah County. One where Multnomah County would pay the cost, part of the cost of mental health, qualified mental health professionals that we would, in order to, we would need to match it in order to receive it. The second is attendance staff who would be monitoring attendance. And this is building on a current attendance initiative that they would pay for part of those folks, but we would have to match it. So if we don't have dollars to match it, we don't receive it.
What kind of dollars are you looking at there?
We are looking at a couple hundred thousand dollars for each of the...
And colleagues, I would just ask, let's just make a note and hold our question.
Make a note. And some of these end up being things that will be visible in part two of the budget thing. They're not visible yet. The other thing that, at the current number identified by the state would stall current forward momentum, we have in critical areas including CTE expansion, support for emerging bilingual students, inclusion for special education students, school security, so campus security officers, getting to expand Avid services to the schools that were planning to do that this year. Early learner programming, equity programs and training, so beyond diversity for our new teachers. PBIS and restorative justice training for our new counselors and for all of our counselors. And we're working to build that capacity internally so that we're able to have that as a skill set in each of our schools and then technology for students and teachers. So the things that will not move or will be at hold steady rather than have movement, include those things. And that would be the end.
Great. Thank you so much. So questions? I had a few popped up earlier. Any other clarifying or other questions or comments for the superintendent?
Sure.
Director Curler.
Yeah, I got a few, but just maybe you can explain the, how does the substitution pool fit into this budget at all?
You mean the bigger sub, teacher subpool?
Yeah, so what I've been hearing is that we're low on subs. And I hear story after story, and it's cannibal, but it's a bit worse. And so does that have a place in this budget or has it, what's the, educate me on that.
So we're holding steady on the amount we've budgeted for subs. Some of the training things that we've identified end up requiring sub, but you won't, that's not part of this budget. It's not part of staffing. And some of the issues that are identified are who's in our current subpool, what days they will identify themselves as being available. And we hired a lot of our subs last year, so it's actual people that we need in our subpool. And the budget would be much, and it's not this part of the budget. So here, we're actually budgeting staff in part two of the budget. We would be, if we were looking to provide substitute teachers for any particular things that we're doing, we would add more dollars for subs. So like when we're doing big training efforts, one of the things that we, or Avid, for instance, things that we're at, we are planning on teachers being able to be out of their building, then we have to build in subcosts, but it's not in this part of the budget. This is paying for staff.
No, I get that. And so, but in terms of substitutions and the rate that we have for classes being filled now with substitutes, and there's an X percentage that do not happen because?
We don't have subs.
We just, for some reason, that day, the sub's not there.
Our subpool is too small.
Okay, and so, but that's not necessarily a budget issue per se, but it actually is because when the sub's not there, then the money's not being spent. And so it reflects on forward cash flow.
So as a budget issue, we need to budget when we are planning on hiring subs. And as a recruitment issue, we need a subpool that's large enough to accommodate our need for subs. And we also have subs that will put restrictions on what buildings they'll go to, what days they'll substitute. And we've got some of those parameters that we need, that need some work, but different than a budget issue. That part's different than a budget issue.
Right. So I guess my question, so I get all those three. So my question is to you is, do we need to budget more for actual dollars spent for substitution?
It's a good question that would show up in part two of the budget, not this part of the budget.
Okay.
Okay.
Any questions? Director Curler?
I'm good for it.
Okay. Director Buell?
I have three questions. Under the third grade reading, we have eight FTE is what it looked like we were adding there. And the language was to work on early literacy. What does that mean?
So it's reading specialists to work on early literacy, but either with, in our focus and priority schools. So it's designated focus and priority schools who would benefit from having an additional staff person who's working, both with students. So it could be pull-out kind of things with students or it could be working with staff to increase their capacity.
So what's our expectation of working with staff and working with students?
I think it could look different school to school. So it'll allow the individual schools to do some, what are their needs.
I did not see any increase in librarians on your list. Is that correct?
You did not. And I'll tell you why, Steve, is we did the big push on counselors in this one. And I knew you would ask about the librarians.
We listed Avid as an elective. But I don't know, I wouldn't call that an elective. So you got Avid mixed in there with all the other electives. It'd be interesting to find which are Avid, which are electives because Avid isn't really an elective.
So what we did was add elective capacity across all of the K8s. And you've got, and middle schools. And you've got a number of middle schools who will be adding Avid. And so this gives them the capacity to do that. You've got other ones that don't have art. It gives them the capacity to do that. So we didn't do the, only the Avid schools get something or only the art schools. We basically gave everybody the capacity to do something that either they're planning to add or that they have a gap. So.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Director Buell?
No, that's my three questions on this at this point in time.
Other folks, any comments? Go ahead to Director again.
Sure. I was just sort of writing down all my little comments and comments and questions I wanted to mention. So first of all, in terms of school staffing, it's totally exciting to see that we're adding more teachers almost across the board. So that's great. At the high school level, I was, I want to ask the question that I know we're going to get asked from every high school parent, which is, will this then allow us to schedule every high school kid for eight? for eight period day, for a full school day?
You know, it's continuing to move us in that direction, and part of what we're asking is that we add more elective classes so that students have more capacity to, again, in the high schools. Yeah. So, mathematically, does it allow us to do that? I don't know the real answer to that, so I'll get back to you with an answer.
Yeah, could you get back to us, because obviously that's where we want to land. And then I had the opportunity this week to meet with Linda and Michelle with the Classified Union, and it was great. And I was asking them what their highest priorities are, so I'm going to just channel them for just a second. But I think they're going to be thrilled to see that you're talking to, I don't even know if they're here, to, hi. Two secretaries in every building was a huge high priority, so thank you. You know, they were even saying that with one secretary, they can't even take a restroom break without leaving the front office free, and there's all kinds of safety concerns and the rest. And the fact that you're adding EAs, you know, they were talking about K2, but it sounds like you're focused first on kindergarten, which makes sense, and will grow from there, and especially trying to get those into the par ranks. One of the things that they were talking about, and I don't think you're getting into this level of detail yet, but I'd like to kind of put it on the radar, is the professional development and the training and the orientation that is given to, you know, school secretaries. And EAs isn't nearly what it needs to be. And so, I just want to make sure as we go that we're talking about what the professional, you know, that we have a sufficient professional development budget as we're bringing in all this new staff. Because I know we have like teacher, you know, we have mentorship programs for teachers and the rest, and I think they have a keen interest in, in that for the EAs and for the school secretaries. And especially if a new school secretary is in a school with a new principal, it's really hard. So, I just wanted to kind of put that on the radars in terms of professional development budget. The counselors, one counselor in every school, I'm just absolutely thrilled, and outdoor school. The athletic directors and moving to a full-time athletic director in our high schools, I think is great. One of the things that I hope we look toward in the next year or two, if the state comes through with more funding, is to have a similar kind of capacity in the arts. I mean, wouldn't that be exciting to have, you know, a full-time person in each cluster figuring out and working with all of the schools to get to that K-12 articulation? So, I think it, it makes sense to start with the athletics. I mean, we were already pretty far along, and we've got a great, you know, athletic director over the whole district. We've got Artosa now for the arts. But, you know, clearly to have that kind of capacity at the cluster level for the arts too would be pretty exciting. So, yeah, I'm thrilled with what you have. This, of course, is dependent on a 7.5 billion dollar budget. So, and we're going down to Salem tomorrow to testify, which I'm really thrilled about in support of that. But it will look very different if we don't get there.
So, here's what I'll say. So, what I just presented to you is really because of our growth in student numbers and our local option. So, the staffing, we're going to push go tomorrow. All the other things, so when you're listing professional development and what we would like to see, which is part of what we're looking at as part two of the budget, is dependent on us getting more money from-
Okay.
Yeah, the state. Yeah, so.
Director below.
I appreciate ending with that conversation about that it's predicated on the state budget at 7.5, because that's, if we're, if the state budget is 300 million short, if we assume that we have 8% of that, that's $24 million short that I am, I just, to our, to our local media who may not be here or who are here, who will carry this message of all the investments that we are projecting to make, please be sure to mention that if we are adding quote-unquote 140 teachers because of unwinding of compression, increased assessed value, and because of the local option levy, it will not feel like we're adding 140 if the state winds up $300 million short of that 7.5 number. So, oftentimes, I remember two years ago, we got in this piece of saying, oh, look, we got this art tax. We're going to be adding teachers. And really, we were still cutting because the state budget didn't meet what it needed to. And families were confused. They're like, no, you said this was a reinvestment, like we was a hold steady budget and we were cutting. So, I just want to be clear that this budget has to come in at 7.5 for us to have current service levels. And even that comes with challenges. Like we said, it doesn't fund our full day, but we can manage that small of a gap. 7.8, 7.5 is more the target, and I hear that across the state again from our sister districts saying, if we're really going to make progress on our 40, 40, 20, and even if you don't like 40, 40, 20, if you want to begin to see the services that our students need back in the schools, we have to make progress towards that 7.8, 7.5.
Yep. Director Knowles?
Sure, thank you. I also am excited to see some of the ads. Secretaries, so important, EAs, the counselors. I'm really thrilled about avid because I think it's so important for our students to have that program to help them realize their potential. I thank Greg for your concern or voicing it so well, the concern around the budget, because if we're at 7.2, you know, this is not going to happen. All this reinvestment that we are so excited about and all this extra help for our students to help us meet those three priorities would be very difficult for us to make that happen. And I, I also want to make sure that, like I stated earlier, that we're not confusing the 7.5 with being everything Portland Public Schools needs, because it isn't. And it's not with every, there are a lot of districts out there that it's not going to be enough, but 7.2 definitely is not enough. So, I'm very happy that you're going to Salem tomorrow to, to work on that. And then the other thing, the one, my one big disappointment, which is not a big disappointment because it's also great, is I also would like to see more happening with the arts, because I think that they help hold our students in school just as much as athletics, if not, well, I won't say more, but just as much as athletics. And so, I'd like to see us investing more in arts as well across the grades and articulated curriculum so that we're, we're able to have our students start in kindergarten, first grade with arts and move forward. And the other thing I saw, Dave Porter, there is foreign language also. I'd like to, I mean, we haven't talked that much about foreign language recently, but it's a big concern for me. I've never been able to speak another foreign language, and I always wanted to be able to speak a foreign language. And I've tried and tried, and I think if I'd have had it when I was in grade school.
It's not too late.
I bet, you know what? I'm starting Spanish classes. I'm not giving up. But I really think that that is important for our students because we're in a, you know, it's a small world, and it's important to have another language. So, arts and language are two things that, for me, are very important still. And then finally, I just want to say, I also was very happy to see and hear the work on continuing, our continuation of looking at career technical education and reinforcing that, because I think that that's also going to be so important for our students, not only to hold them into school, but to give them that vision for what the possibilities are for them as they move through our district. So, that's, that's exciting for me. So, thank you. Nice job.
Director Buell?
Superintendent Smith, I'm kind of confused about this presentation because we, we talk about third grade reading being our, basically, our core priority. I mean, maybe the number one priority in the school district. And we put, in this new budget, we put reading specialists into eight schools? One reading specialist in eight schools? I mean, those schools probably need two or three each. We have middle schools, I talked to a middle school principal not too long ago, who said they have 200 kids and are her school, two or more grade levels behind. And we're putting in eight reading specialists and no librarians? It doesn't make sense to me. I don't understand how we would be attacking third grade reading with basically almost no change and only doing it in eight schools? Where we have tons of schools that need reading specialists, and they're just not showing up? We're putting in avid but not reading specialists? I mean, I don't like to do that where you go this versus this, because I don't think it makes sense. But if, let's quit saying third grade reading is our priority then. Let's all, let's have a motion and say, third grade reading is no longer our priority, and it certainly shouldn't be. If this is how we're approaching that priority with tons of kids in our school district who are unable to read near grade level, and we're trying to catch them by the third grade, we're not going to catch them by the third grade with this. We're going to have the same thing over and over again. We're going to catch up quite a few kids with a reading specialist in those eight schools, but nowhere. I mean, let's just dump it as a priority if this is how we're going to approach it with no librarians to get, which is, everybody knows librarians are a key to a kid's reading well. So, I don't know. There, there you go. That's, I'd like to see that changed. I'll come in and show you where to change it if you'd like. Or I'll point out who to get rid of and what to do, and we'll set it up. And then I'll, we'll add all those, all those reading specialists that we need and librarians.
All right. So.
So, can I just, so a couple things. Just the EAs in kindergarten, we actually saw as a really high leverage strategy because the, the third grade reading is not all about just third grade. And so, we saw that as a really high leverage strategy. We've also added some things in the one-time budget that we just passed, like the dyslexia training and trying to increase the number of student, of teachers who are familiarized with the dyslexia training. And Melissa, both our October and our last one-time ad included things that were specifically directed at third grade reading. So, I agree, like what I like to do librarians across the system, I would absolutely like to do librarians across the system.
I'm commencing to try and do it.
I know. And, well, and what we did was prioritize counselors in this one. And if we get to keep going, like if we get to the 7.8, let's put librarians on top of the list.
Adding EAs to kindergarten will, in some ways, help the reading. But the kids who are in the first grade this year, next year, the kids are in the second grade, the kids are in the third grade, the kids are in the fourth grade, and the kids are in the fifth grade who can't read are going to all be with us-
All the way through.
-for 10 more years, and we need to focus on that. And then we can look and see in a couple years if, when I'm parading the EAs in kindergarten, if it makes sense, if it really is a strategy that makes sense. I don't know where it's been a strategy that makes sense for reading anyhow. I don't know. For one thing, most, this is, we're almost brand new with the Common Core teaching kids to read in kindergarten. I mean, that's, that's almost a new thing. So, will this help? Maybe. But how about those kids who are in the first grade next year and we're condemning them to be unable to read when they, anywhere near grade level when they get out of high school? I mean, it's a condemnation on those children, and I don't think we should be doing that. We should be teaching those children to read, and the only way really to do it is to get reading teachers into those schools to help those kids who aren't reading anywhere near grade level. That's at least my opinion. Maybe we could use some of that 8% money for, specifically for reading teachers. Because that's, we're talking about that. I mean, it's, it's difficult to get those kids. They have the money, but it's not earmarked for reading teachers. Maybe it should be earmarked for reading teachers.
And I guess I would just add, I mean, I think some of you often speak, Director Buell, of the $14 million in outside contracts. Some of that money goes to partnerships with culturally specific organizations who work directly with families and children and supporting.
It ain't, it ain't working. That's the point. And reading teachers will work. They will work. They will work.
So, I would just like to weigh in. I just really appreciate this, Superintendent Smith. I would again just echo the legislative piece and really urge those watching to contact their legislators. When we were down with the student representatives, hearing from a legislative leader that the 7.2 million was a good number, was very distressing to hear. So, I think it's, it's not going to be us saying it. It's going to need the constituents, you all, our audience, are the ones who are going to move this. When Superintendent Smith said that there is a movement to go quickly to the 7.2 and settle the school number, that's not our movement. That's in Salem. So, I, our legislators need to hear loud and clear that this is not acceptable for our children and that quickly settling on an unacceptable number that goes backward on investment in our children is not acceptable. They need to stay in there and keep fighting until we get the number and the type of schools our students deserve. So, please, if you don't already know your legislator's email address, you can just Google Oregon State Legislature. They have a really great website. You can type in your address, and up will pop the information for how you can contact your representative and your senator. I really would implore everybody watching to do that. If we don't get at least the 7.5, as Superintendent Smith has outlined, we are going to be cutting. We are going to be moving backward. We are not going to be able to have, whether it's reading teachers, the librarians, CTE expansion, avid, early learners, restorative justice, support for emerging bilingual students who are dual language programs, school security technology, a long list of pieces in addition just to the basics this superintendent is outlining here. We're not going to be able to do it, and that's not acceptable. So, that's my pitch to please weigh in. As well as coming to our budget forums, we love to hear from folks about, you know, feedback and thoughts about what the trade-offs would be, what you would support. But really, in terms of getting what we need, the focus needs to be on Salem because they're the ones who have the power to make those decisions. So.
And actually, for Portland, I think these two talking points end up being important ones. The first one, that according to ODE, we would be getting $120 less per ADMW than we are in the current biennium. So, we're going backwards, and any local option then starts filling holes as opposed to being an ad, which is what our voters intended. And then the second one, as we implement full day K, we're $13 million short of adding full day K, which we already offer. So, we can no longer charge tuition. We will go ahead and offer it, and where the dollars to offer it will come from is from our other grade levels. So, those two end up being really significant, I think, talking points if you're communicating with our legislators about the impact on Portland.
Thank you so much. All right. So, thank you.
I've got a few more questions.
Oh, sure, Director Curler.
Sure. So, in, in terms of the local option, a couple, a couple things. One, I want to reemphasize, your point is that this, the staffing plan is we're going forward tomorrow, apparently. Correct?
Yes, we would go, we present the staffing plan, and then we punch go. So, we, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
And there's, there's no, the board, is there approval to that, or you just go tomorrow? I'm just curious from a budget standpoint, how that works.
So, this is generally what we'll do, is that I will come forward with the staffing plan and make it visible, and you guys will ask questions. We've done it with principals. Solid principals have all weighed in, both on the overarching, what are we doing? But our hope is, and part of why we split the budget into two separate presentations, is that we're not waiting till the end of March or to start our staffing. We're able to hear the staffing plan, punch go.
This is a conservative staffing plan to move forward?
Exactly.
Okay. And it's, and it's, and it is whether the, the budget, wherever the budget lands in Salem, we're going to move forward with the staffing plan.
With the staffing plan, and I'm going to show you this.
To be a minimum.
Exactly.
Okay. So, my next question.
Here's what you got right there.
Yep. Is the local option, what are we, in terms of the, what are we assuming here? So, in other words, what's the assumption on the assessed value and the compression unwinding? What's the total number of dollars here that we're looking at?
The total amount on, David, do you want to come on up and do this one?
David Wine, Deputy CFO and Budget Director. So, three assumptions in terms of the increase in dollars for local option. First, by virtue of the renewal and no longer diverting money to urban renewal, we're assuming $4.5 million of additional local option revenue from that. Those are the numbers that were generated as part of the campaign when we researched that and went out to voters. So, that's one factor. Assessed value growth, we're assuming 3.5%. That's the same number that people across the state are using for permanent rate taxes. It's a relatively conservative number, given what our assessed value growth was last year.
So, what, how much, what's that mean in dollars to add to the 4.5?
So, the total from the three factors is $10.6 million. That's how we get to 140 positions. The assessed value growth, I will get back to you with this, with the breakdown between assessed value growth and compression unwinding.
The total is what I was looking for.
Yeah, so 10.6. Four and a half is, is the renewal factor from urban renewal. 3.5% is the assessed value growth. And then we assumed that compression would be five percentage points less than it was this year. Last year, it went down by just over 5%, and it's, it's very difficult to predict that exactly. But we looked at real estate, real estate market data and based on what we saw happening in real estate markets, particularly on the west side for Portland, which is where compression is an issue for us. We believe that that five percentage points unwinding and compression is, is an aggressive but reasonable expectation.
Okay. So, yeah, I'm fleshing those out. Would be helpful if you'd be able to. And then in terms of the pool. And then, in terms of the pool that you're going to set aside for later on, did you mention how many, what's the FTE on that set aside?
I was just going to say, I know. So, no, I did not mention it.
Okay.
And it's roughly 40.
Okay.
And I will say, some of that ends up being, as soon as principals get their staffing, they identify issues, and they'll come back and they'll work with their senior directors, and we'll release some this year, and then some of what we intentionally hold back to the fall when we get adjustments in the actual number of students that show up that's different than what we projected, so it allows us to be responsive quickly once, once we learn that. Kindergarten, kindergarten being the biggest wild card in terms of what we project and what's real in the fall.
Great.
Could I ask one more question too? Superintendent, your school's staffing formula, you talk about non-formula additions, like for a unique program, a unique situation. Does that include IB coordinator in the six schools where we have IB programs, or does it include any extra support for the, I think it's the high schools that we have advanced scholar programs in where they need some additional supports, Franklin and I think Madison?
Actually, I'm going to ask Sarah Singer to come on up and do this one more specifically.
Because those are programs that require, I mean, the IB program requires an IB coordinator, I mean, you can't not have it, so, and I know, and the advanced scholar, I believe that there's extra stuff involved as well, so.
Yeah, so, for IB, we do support some of our, I think Saban and Skyline and a few other.
Well, there's Vernon, I think Vernon King, Saban, Skyline, Lincoln, Cleveland. So do they all get IB coordinators?
So Lincoln and Cleveland, it shows up, it will show up this year in their position in their school-wide support table, so they'll get a .5.
So they get an extra .5 there for that, okay.
And the advanced scholars is not part of that. Advanced scholars, we did, we supported two schools last year, and if the other part of the budget comes through, we were looking to add a third.
Yep, and so, and advanced scholars is supported in the other budget process.
So did the other part. Isn't it, and on the 31st?
Yes.
Is that what you're saying, correct?
Yep, and it's all, advanced scholars is also dollars, we give them a dollar amount.
As opposed to.
As opposed to FTE.
Right.
Because I believe they pay teachers to mentor teachers after school, and that takes extra time, so that's how that plays out.
Because I think the dollars is still, yeah, exactly. Okay.
Great. Okay, thank you so much.
I have another one.
Oh, okay, Director Kirler.
Because the mentor word reminded me. So, we have a mentor program going here.
Teacher mentor.
Teacher mentors, and so this is assuming the same level, essentially?
This budget assumes the same level.
Yeah, the staffing.
Yes.
And, I don't recall exactly, or roughly, how, what's the FTE on there?
In terms of?
Of.
How many mentors we have?
And, essentially, release times, or is it fully?
No, they're full FTE mentors, God, I'm going to say, yeah, I'll have to get back, I was going to say eight, but, we'll get back to you and tell you. Like, we doubled it last year, and some of this was initially supported by a grant from the state that we then last year put general fund dollars towards, and we are again looking at submitting another grant to a private source to try and expand it this year, but, and it, yeah, we'll, we'll find out what the number is.
All right, so to be continued.
How many, how many?
Seventeen.
We have 17 mentors right now? Awesome, okay.
It's better than me.
Good, yeah, good.
Great. Thank you all so much. Thank you so much Superintendent Smith. So this is going to be obviously an ongoing conversation. March 31st is your full budget message to us. We've got the town halls, and then after your message to us, then it'll be over in our court for further deliberation, input, and discussion modification, whatever. So, ways to go in the process, but this is an exciting start, and again, just to highlight, this is, you're doing your best effort, your staff are doing their best effort, but it really lies in the hands of our legislators and in the hands of you all as their constituents to make it what it needs to be for our kids. All right, so moving on in our agenda, next we have inter-district transfer procedures. So this was an item we first heard at our last meeting, and we're now ready to vote. I believe Judy Brennan is, oh, she's right in front of me, sorry Judy. Judy Brennan, Director of Enrollment and Transfer, is here, if we do have any additional questions. The board will now consider Resolution 5039, 2015 to 16 standard inter-district student transfers. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Director Knowles moves.
Second.
And Director Morton seconds the motion to adopt Resolution 5039. Ms. Houston, any citizen comment?
No.
There is none. Any board discussion? Seeing none, the board will now vote on Resolution Number 5039. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes. All opposed? And any abstentions? So Resolution Number 5039 is approved by a vote of seven to zero. All right, thank you very much. Okay, so next on our agenda is a smarter balanced assessment resolution. So, last week we discussed a draft resolution, there's been further input and suggested edits, so I believe we've got at our places and should be up there in the corner, the latest, hold on a minute, I had it already and now I'm not finding it. Thank you. Resolution, and then also Director Buell emailed in today some additional proposals, so that should be there as well. So, the board will now consider Resolution 5040, Resolution on Implementation of the Smarter Balanced Assessment. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Director Regan moves, and Director?
Second.
Director Morton seconds the motion to adopt Resolution Number 50, excuse me, 5040. And I know we do have some citizens signed up for this, so Ms. Houston, can you go ahead and calm them down?
Our first two speakers, Maria Damas and Scott McLean.
I'm going to speak for Scott McLean, who was here, and he left, so, he needed to get home.
Okay.
We were just going to give testimony from GM Garcia. My name is Siobhan Burke, B-U-R-K-E. GM Garcia is a ELL teacher, administrator, and consultant.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, can you, just state your name for the record and show your last name?
Sure, I, I don't know if you can hear me, I see the little green light, so I was talking. Siobhan Burke, B-U-R-K-E.
Okay. Welcome.
Hi, I'm giving testimony for GM Garcia, who could not be here. She's an ELL teacher, administrator, and consultant. A few years ago, PPS began to use the term emergent bilinguals because it emphasizes bilingualism as a legitimate asset that our students bring to the learning process. Sback is one more way for the corporate education reform to disenfranchise and discriminate against students learning English as a new language. Common Core testing is filled with language barriers for emergent bilingual students. Academic testing results should not reflect how much or little English a student knows. Students from other countries and many bilingual program participants right here happen to know and can demonstrate skill in reading, writing, math, social studies, and science in languages other than English. How are we measuring their academic knowledge and skill? If we can't answer that question, then it is time to revisit what PPS means when they include diverse language learners in their equity policies and practices. There was a time when the Oregon Department of Education used the APRENA exam to measure Spanish reading skills in third grade. Has PPS approached ODE with requests to assess Spanish reading? Good teachers know that we should test in the same language that children have been taught. It is the best way to measure what they know. As the largest district with the highest number of dual immersion programs in Oregon, bilingual educators, parents, and students should expect that PPS will stand up for its ELL students and the bilingual programs. Please demand that ODE be more linguistically responsive to our programs and our bilingual students. In addition, please examine the quality and quantity of local reading assessments that we, as a district, have added to the dual immersion programs. We need to use the equity lens. To be more specific, GULAS, FANETICAS, DIBBLES, DRA must all be subject to review for overlap, linguistic appropriateness, sound Spanish reading pedagogy, and the impact each one has on instruction. In closing, I am requesting, number one, take a public stance for linguistic and cultural equity as it relates to Sback and our emergent bilingual students, and two, form a task force or committee that has at least 50% bilingual classroom teacher participation. Charge this group with examining all of the reading tests required of PPS in dual immersion elementary schools, using an equity lens that ensures best practice according to research in other successful bilingual programs in Oregon. Lastly, this group's work and recommendations should inform policy changes that decrease the quantity and increase the quality of reading assessments in our elementary bilingual programs.
Thank you very much.
I'm going to put my timer because every time I speak, they cut my three minutes. My name is Maria De Silva, and I just wanted to ask a question to the audience if they know this book, or you guys, if you know this book. It's called Separate is Never Equal. My statement is about equality. Richard, you know this book? Come on, you guys are educators. No wonder why Steve Buell is advocating for librarians. So this is pretty much about the Mendez family suing the district for segregation discrimination, so I really recommend you two guys to read it, bring it to schools. This will help a lot in terms of diversity. I do have a lot of questions. I also have like 20 questions that I can give it to you, that I passed to Mr. Robert Saxton when I went to Gladstone to his Sback presentation. I never heard anything, so I could give it to you if you're going to be able to answer my questions. First of all, I just here because I support opting out, it gives time to parents, Spanish speakers, not only gives them a choice, but it gives them the opportunity if they feel, they're feeling that they're discriminated, or if there is racism in this test, to investigate, to research. I don't know if you know, but at Reglet, our computers don't work pretty well and they freeze. We also have tried to hire a tech specialist, but nobody wants to, you know, work for the little money, so, I, I hear a lot of comments of the educators, they say, why would they do these tests Sback to our kids if our computers are not working, they're broke, they're freezing? It's ridiculous. I think, my job has been just as a parent volunteer to educate parents in the legal rights to opt out, and I was intimidated by the assistant principal. The reason why I am educating parents is because PPS, I believe, you guys don't do a very good job educating Latino parents, Spanish speakers, I don't know how many of you guys speak Spanish, but we do have thousands of Latino parents and students who needs to be, you know, educated about their rights in terms of opting out. I don't think you have made it clear that it's their choice and it's their legal rights, and you definitely have not told them that only 3% of the ELL learners will, will only pass. I, I've been told by the assistant principal that she's in favor of Sback, she has debated in our committee meetings, she has advocated, she even compared the time of the Sback testing to the OCS testing. I, I was approached by her last Thursday, I did bring a letter to you, I don't know if you got it. She even told, the only person who I helped in that week to opt out, she, they even gave us the form out, to opt out, to bring it here. They don't even want to send it to the research department, and I gave it to her. To finish this, she, the assistant principal, compared me with the Jehovah Witness. She got the, thank you, she got the teacher's contract, she pulled it out, she called the regional administrator so she can talk to me, she called me into her office to tell me that I cannot pass the opt-out form in the school. She sent me to the street, she kicked me out. I'm a parent volunteer, I've been asking and advocating for money for the school, for the PTA, all of a sudden, when I passed the opt-out form for, to educate parents, I call a Jehovah Witness. There is more to it, I would be happy to talk to Carol or any of you guys that are willing to listen. I also, just to make it very clear, how I felt discriminated and inequity, I came to your office, she saw me here, I asked a form to, to file a transfer for my son to Alameda, and she said, no, Alameda, you cannot go to Alameda because it's very small, it's very crowded, it's like a gatekeeper.
I'm sorry, could you wrap up your comments?
So, I, I wrote, so I, I do have more, more examples of, you know, how, you know, I have not even encouraged to fill the form of transfer, and then, even if you deny it, it's okay, but at least give me that opportunity, it's in my way to school, my son goes to Legacy Emanuel to do this OT, and then I have to drive to Reglet to drop off my daughter, so there is more. I'm just going to keep coming to ask more questions. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Next two?
Our next two speakers, Young Kue Nam and Chris Allman.
Hi, I'm Young Nam, I'm a teacher at Walton High School. Should I start?
Please do.
Well, you know, I, I have to say, I'm really up, not even upset, I'm angry that I have to be here. I have student work, I have to grade, and I've been bringing up this issue since last year, and I feel like the response from my administrators and from the board has been horrible. I've been pointing out since last year that there are major problems with, not only Sback and Common Core, but I'll just focus on Sback tonight. I've been pointing out since last year that it's questionable whether these tests themselves are valid, the way that they're scored are valid, and what I've gotten from the district, from people like Penny Pavla, the consultant hired by the district, the other representative, I forget her name, she's, I don't blame her because she's newly hired and she's being told all this, but either way, both the leadership within PPS and in Oregon State has been either negligent or deceptive. One major issue is the way that these tests are scored. I've been bringing up, since last year, we've been seeing reports from other places in the country with both Park and Sback, that these tests are scored either with computer algorithms or with temp workers hired on Craigslist. And that's been, I've heard from Penny Pavla at once, she admitted that partly it would be scored by computer algorithms, and then she claimed that it would be certified teachers. And this is flatly untrue. I've done research, and I know that with every single test I've seen for Sback and Park, they're scored by temp workers, I've found numerous ads on Craigslist for temp workers hired by Data Recognition Corporation, which is the company that subcontracted by AIR for Oregon. In other states, it's done directly by AIR, in other states it's done by Pearson, but all of them are hiring temp workers, random temp workers on Craigslist, paying them between $10.70 an hour and $13.00 an hour. And in California, it's, they're hired, hiring, contracting through ETS and also hiring temp workers, and they've, they're planning on hiring 6,294 temp workers to do this scoring, and so far they've certified 3,777 of them, certified, who knows how, what, you know, what counts as certified, but out of that, only 241 of them are teachers. And I have to ask you, why would a teacher waste their time scoring random essays and constructive responses even from third graders responding to, explaining their math questions when they, they are busy scoring their own students' work? And, you know, I, as an educator, my hourly rate is $40.00 an hour, I'm not going to be hired, working $13, for $13.00 an hour, scoring random writing samples from students I don't know. And I know as an educator, when I score my own students' work and assess their work, and I have a stack here, it takes a lot of work and effort to do that. I know my students, I know what I've taught, and I have to take breaks every two hours because if I go for more than two hours scoring essay after essay, I, I start losing perspective, and you could read what the accounts of professional test scorers have been, sitting in, you know, in front of computer screens as temp workers, where they're being driven to work as fast as possible, read as fast as possible. This is not justice to students, to use these as high-stakes tests to determine whether students graduate or not, and you'll even say that, you know, they have these other opportunities.
Mr. Nam, could you please wrap up?
But, you know, think about the psychological effect this has on, especially our struggling students, to get another experience of sitting for nine hours through testing, badly designed tests that ask stupid questions like pineapple sleeves and things like that, and then that fail them. How's that going to make them feel about themselves and about their futures as students for their education?
Thank you very much. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Chris Allman, and for the record, I am actually a Beaverton School District parent, but I appreciate this work that you're trying to do on Resolution Number 40. That you're even questioning whether Sback really measures college and career readiness is, I appreciate. But I do believe that Portland Public needs to go a little bit further in looking into what is going on with student privacy. To give you a little context, I've been studying this issue for about three and a half years now. I've worked a lot with Beaverton on assessments, language art, lit project team that I'd worked on. I was with City Club on an early care and education research committee for a couple of years, Washington County Commissioner on Children and Families, worked with then Superintendent Ron, Rob Saxton on improving Latino academic success. But more importantly, what I did is I was probably the first parent in the nation to request my son's state longitudinal data system records. And what I found out is that he was labeled as a dropout four times. And of interest is, one, a few of the times were intra-district transfers and one was an inter-district transfer. One year of data was actually missing. So, this is something that's been widely discussed as I also talk about the fact that I'm a physician and I see what's happening with big data and in healthcare with data breaches. What is going on with SPAC is that the Oregon Department of Education has two contracts aside from what they're doing with the Smarter Balance Assessment. They have contracts with American Institutes for Research, it's a nine-year contract, and one with UCLA National Center for Research on Evaluation Standards and Student Testing. It's called CREST for short. So, as was mentioned, AIR is, they're the vendor to, for the test, which makes sense because they develop computerized adaptive testing. They have products that they can benefit from this arrangement. AIR is collaborating with Google to do an assessment through the Chromebook. That concerns me. They work with Data Recognition Corporation, which has their fingers in so many big data miners, including Booz Allen Hamilton. Smarter Balance's student privacy policy states that they may provide access to student data that has been altered so students' identity cannot be recognized. So, Smarter Balance is affiliated with CREST for Research into Accountability Systems Practices and Policies. They've worked heavily with Melinda Gates Foundation. But more importantly, what I find concerning is PPS is talking about ways to create local assessments. What CREST does is quite the opposite. They use biometrics and even bigger data. They talk about using real-time, unobtrusive measures such as, quote, keystroke, response latencies, and eye-tracking data in combination with data mining and cluster analysis techniques. They have partnered with WestEd to assist with 16 regional centers in all 50 states in developing state and district capacity for data use and to improve teachers' formative assessment practices.
So, Ms. Allman, could you please wrap up that?
And that is only a smidgen of what's going in the state longitudinal data systems, which I've already alluded to. So, this is the focus on SPAC. Please pay attention to data privacy. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do you see the next two?
Our last two, Jim DiMarco and Andrew Davidson.
I see Andrew. Jim DiMarco, are you still with us? Oh, coming down. Great. Welcome.
Good evening, board members, superintendents. So, I was asked to come speak tonight. Oh, by the way, my name is Andrew Davidson. For those of you who don't know, D-A-V-I-D-S-O-N. I was asked to come speak tonight as a former board member who was on the board when we were sort of drafting Resolution 4943. And first of all, I just want to say thank you because I think the position this board is taking is really, you know, compared to a lot of places, a strong one. And I wanted to say that I think that it's really important, the stuff that we're taking. I think that we also need to be looking at how we convey that to the community. I mean, obviously, this is a hot topic right now. It's becoming really quite divisive in some of our communities. And I think that, you know, when we're trying to prove that we're doing what's best for students, which is something that, you know, this resolution obviously tries to do on behalf of this board, I think we need to convey that to parents as well, what we're trying to do, and help them realize that, you know, we wanna support them to do what's best for their child. So, making sure that, you know, if parents feel that they would like to opt their children out of the testing, we, you know, are supportive of that and we're able to help them do that. Because the fact is, what we don't want is for the, you know, the students who have parents who are able to take the time, learn about this subject and, you know, support their students in that way to opt their students out and those who don't have that opportunity to then, you know, not have the opportunity to opt out. So, I just wanted to say thank you and really support you if you're able to go the extra mile. And, you know, this is, again, you as board members know that this is not your first choice. You know, your resolution that you passed this summer was quite an ambitious one and I hope that we can continue to make progress in this way. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Jim DiMarco. My children attended Glencoe Elementary School. We've been in the news quite a bit lately, a number of different topics. We've had a number of different news organizations reaching out to us, asking us what's going on at Glencoe. Is it permissible to give you handouts?
I'm sure just hand them to staff and then they can get them to us. Thanks.
We're looking for transparency and truth in our school system. Have any of you seen the current survey that was implemented for PPS?
The Successful School Survey?
Yeah.
It was the one for Success School Surveys?
Yep, yeah.
And has everyone taken that survey?
Yep.
Can I just see a raise of hands?
If you have a child.
If you don't have a kid in school, you can't take it.
Okay. And did you find that survey to be adequate?
We're not actually engaging in dialogue right now, so why don't you go ahead and share your perspective?
If you did find that survey to be adequate, that's great. If you didn't, I understand.
And sir, is this related to the Smarter Balance assessment or is it more about the survey?
It is, yeah. It is.
Okay.
I guess what we're talking about, there was one question about Smarter Balance in the survey itself. And it was just one question. As I paged through the survey and whatnot, I found just interesting topics throughout about teachers' respects for students, about intimidation, how the other staff treats the students. And then it asked the typical questions about who you are, where you're from. And then it had some really interesting things to say about where you're from, if you're an African-American or from different parts of Africa, or if you are other Africa, or if you're other Black. And then it was also really interesting is that it then asked you in the survey about your sexual orientation. And I just found that really curious why that question would be asked. And I'm sure all of you would, you know, agree that that might be a question that you are uncomfortable asking or even answering. But I'm just wondering, why are these questions on these surveys? And then, how does that tie into Smarter Balance or Common Core? I think a lot of it, from the perspective of parents and the perspective of guardians or perspective of grandparents, is that some of these questions might feel intimidating, but also uncomfortable. So, I didn't finish the survey, so I don't know if any of my questions will actually count. Because I don't know what the rules of the survey are, just like I'm sure a lot of you don't know what the rules of Common Core are. So, in the balance of all of this, we have regular Common Core opt-out meetings once a month. Steve comes to all of them. I don't know if any of the panel has been to any of those Common Core meetings for opting out. In that packet, there's an invitation to join us on April 12th at 2:00. It would be great to see all of you. I know Steve will be there. But what we're really looking for is the transparency and truth about what's going on with Common Core or the Smarter Balance tests.
Thank you, Mr. DiMarco.
Is my three minutes up?
Yes, it is. And you can also follow up with Roseanne, our board manager, if any additional questions about the survey and how it's been working. Thank you very much. So, thanks, everybody, for taking the time to come and comment on this resolution. So, if I may, just briefly, before we open it up to comments from the colleagues, I just wanted to kind of quickly, because since the last one that we discussed last week, there's been a number of changes to this resolution, so if I could just quickly go through what's before us tonight. So, in the recitals, we just briefly note that we did pass the Resolution 4943 last summer, that the OD expressing concerns about, multiple concerns about the state's implementation of the Smarter Balance Assessment, that the Oregon Department of Education has moved forward. Statewide implementation testing is starting tomorrow. We'll run through June. P piece here is at a nice new development. It's the State Work Group. Along with Nancy Golden, Oregon's Chief Education Officer, is proposing to delay any sanctions due to Smarter Balance results, calls for a reduced role of summative standardized testing in our children's education. This is in draft form, I'll just say as an aside, so this is another piece that's really important for folks to weigh in to the state. So, those recommendations are in alignment with what we called for in our resolution last summer, so we're glad to see that. Also have learned, and we added to this resolution, that there are promising discussions at the federal level also about reducing the use of high-stakes testing. We also note in D that we have a PPS Assessment Advisory Committee collaboratively working with our teachers' union and our teachers to do a comprehensive review of all types of assessment conducted in PPS. And the recognized assessment expert, Dr. Rick Stiggins, is a volunteer advisor to that committee as well as to the statewide committee. So, wanted to be sure we have that information out there for folks. Under E, we just note the things that staff has done to help prepare for the state's implementation of the SBA in our district. Under F, we note that we support moving away from Oaks, but that we are opposed to high stakes or punitive state or federal mandated summative assessments. Under G, we note that we're concerned, or we continue to be concerned about the length of time that is being spent for students in grades three, eight, and 11 taking the test, lack of opportunity to review test results, as well as the potential negative impact on schools and students as a result of any state-imposed sanctions or labels. And then the final recital just wants to thank staff and everybody in the community for the hard work during this pretty challenging transition. And then, under the resolved, we call on the state to, A, reduce the length of the test, B, provide constructive guidance for schools and students regarding the results, including feedback to students that will help them learn from the test, C, provide a comprehensive report on the first year of Smarter Balance implementation, so costs, time spent, lesson learned, reliability, explanation of how the results would be used. D is, we also call on the state to develop a plan for how to support districts with families opting out and consider, that they consider not counting students who have opted out as part of the cohort. In other words, not have that be accounting against schools. And then, under E, that we urge the state to support the option presented at the national level of moving from testing every single student to using a sampling of students. And that's something that is under discussion, is a possibility at the national level, so we wanted to include our support for that. And then, resolve number two is, again, supporting the State Work Group's vision to reduce the role of summative standardized testing and develop a greater focus on in-class, teacher-and-student-driven assessments. And then finally, our last resolve, number three, is that we direct the superintendent to provide balanced information to families, including how families can provide feedback to decision-makers at the state and federal levels. In other words, how we can support that, moving forward with that vision of reducing the role of summative high-stakes testing, both at the state and federal level. And also that we ensure that administrators and teachers are communicating to students and families that the lower scores than those on Oaks do not mean that students are failing or that their schools have failed, and ensure that any time spent before the test is around getting oriented to the testing interface rather than extensive, you know, going through lots of, spending lots of time on practice tests. So, that's kind of an overview of where it sits right now. And now, I'll open it up for discussion. Thank you for indulging me in that, in that review of the resolution.
Do we have the resolution? So, this now, it's on the table?
It is, yeah, because we, it's on the table because, and then we had public comment.
I just wanted to thank you for all the work you've done on this. It seems like a really solid resolution and I know that when you brought a first draft forward, one of the things we asked for was to streamline it just a little bit and I think you've done that really well. I think you've hit most of the really key points that we're trying to get across, so I really appreciate your work on it.
Thanks.
Is it, if one would want to make an amendment, how does one do that?
Well, you would move amendment.
Okay. So, I'd like to make a, amend a motion to amend. And it's essentially strengthening, it's adding a little, it's adding to E, which we're saying, we support the option presented by the National Education Association of moving from testing every student's grade three and eight through 11 to sampling of, to sampling of students to gather the same data. And I would amend that we direct the superintendent to work with the state of Oregon to pilot such a program this year instead of the existing regime, testing regime.
So, just to clarify, starting tomorrow?
Starting this year, yep.
Okay.
So, in other words, instead of testing how many kids we're gonna do this year where every kid takes a test, pilot, since this is where we want to move, so let's be proactive.
So, let me just make sure I have this. So, you're moving amendment to resolve number one, E, that you would add the wording, "We direct the superintendent to work with the state of Oregon to pilot," I'm sorry, what's the rest of the wording?
To pilot. To pilot.
Sampling of...
It can match up with the wording on the resolution that says E, essentially, moving from testing every students to using a sampling of students to gather the same data. And that we pilot that this year in order to give the state some, help the state come up with a program.
Okay. So, to pilot this year, meaning to pilot starting on March 10th?
It probably would, we wouldn't start on March 10th. But what we would ask the state is to allow us to do this. It might take some more time, so we probably won't start on...
So, you mean this, so I'll just say this school year. Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Director Buell, seconds. Any discussion?
Can you read it back?
I'm gonna... Bobby, do you have it?
Well, Tom had sent me an ID. Tom, can you just read that?
Okay, so here's another way, here's another way of saying it. And I was gonna add it to E. There's an easier way, which is, "The board directs the superintendent to work with the state of Oregon to pilot a random statistically valid sample of the SPAC test this year in lieu of the existing testing regime."
I'm gonna draw my second, seconded motion.
Okay. So, you...
And essentially, it's just putting meat behind what we're saying in E, saying, "Let's do it."
Okay, so you're modifying your, so you're clarifying the wording of your amendment. So, "Direct the superintendent to work with the state of Oregon to pilot this school year a random valid statistical sample of the SPAC in lieu of the SPAC, period?"
No, that's not what I said. So, I mean, is the concept, can we just talk about the concept?
Okay, so I see Director Buell's asserting the concept, so...
Okay, so here's the language. "The board directs the superintendent to work with the state of Oregon
Yep.
to pilot a random statistically valid sample of the SPAC test this year in lieu of the existing testing regime."
Just for Portland or?
Yeah, we're at the Portland.
Just for Portland. That's where we seconded.
Okay. So, Director Buell has seconded and now discussion.
Okay. And the reason I'm saying this, it just adds meat to what we're already saying. We're saying we support this notion, so if we support it, then let's actually do it. One thing that's clear to me about the current test is that it is in R and D phase and there is, there's lots of folks who want to see if we can do, you know, if we can get the information that we can through less testing every kid. So, let's pilot it. Let's work with the state and see if we can come up with something that makes sense.
So, one, this test has been field-developed, field-tested. It's a number of things. So, I hear you saying an interest in another one. But I guess I also question the fact that we asked the superintendent to work with the state. We could decide right now as a board that we want to make the decision that we will only sample a statistically valid session.
Well, that's what this says.
Well, we're asking the superintendent somehow to magically work something with the state, that that's all we're gonna do. And I'm saying that, again, if this is in the spirit of, "Let's do this," then let's do it and we'll, we as a board, will accept the consequences of whatever that means. And I'm not even sure what that means.
Well, that's essentially, if you want to add friendly language on, that's the intent of this language.
There's a difference between saying, "We as a board will not do more than a statistically valid sample" versus superintendent, "Go work with the state to see if you can do that," right? There's a mess.
Well, we're, the superintendent is a person who's gonna interact with the state, so... the state, so we're not, unless you're gonna call him up tomorrow. So we're asking the superintendent, on our behalf, to work with the state to make this happen. And the state can come back and say, "Okay, that's a great idea, we've been thinking about it, NEA wants to do it, other folks have talked about it." Or the state can go back and say, "No," in which case, the superintendent would let us know, and we can do something else. But we have the language here, we might as well put meat on it.
And I guess I would just say, the, the language here is referring to discussions that are happening at the national level. I don't think it's, I mean, this is trying to support that discussion and move that conversation forward.
Says, "Support the option presented."
Right.
But NEA, that's a national organization.
Yes. So that's different from saying, right away, this spring, that's what's gonna happen. So it's really more like supporting, because things do move more slowly than that at the state and federal levels. So, you know, if we had brought this, if we had brought something like that forward last summer or last fall, that would be different. But for us to ask this superintendent to implement when we're about to launch tomorrow after many months of preparation, a whole shift in how we do things, to me, I don't support that. I mean, I hear what you're saying in terms of the principle, what we want to get to...
Might be easier to test only 700 instead of 40,000, so, but let's just vote on it.
Okay. Okay, any other discussion? Okay, so all in favor, oh, sorry, Director Buell.
I just wanted to point out that, that the idea that it's not, it doesn't, we can't use it for learning for our individual kids, we might as well just do a random sample, it'll give us the same information, it tells what's going on, so might as well just do it this way. This is what they should be doing, hopefully they'll come to their senses.
And that, and that may be what we find, because when we're pressing them for that report and accountability after this first year, that may be what we find. And hopefully, as the conversation with that statewide vision, as well as the conversations at the federal level, it feels like the momentum is heading that way, but we're not there this week. So any, okay, Director Regan.
So I like the language that's in the current resolution, but I would say that what Director Kurlor is doing is just try to really take a much stronger symbolic step by saying to the state, you know what, we, we're doing this under protest almost, that we think that it should be, a random sample of students instead, that we like this idea. I mean, it's, all it's doing is putting a little bit of meat on this. Do I think that if the superintendent calls up the state tomorrow, all of a sudden, things will stop? No, but I think symbolically, it's a, it's a good statement for us to say. We've, we've been doing some pretty strong statements to the state already around standardized testing, and I think we should, we should push it. I mean, there's no reason not to. So I, I'm gonna support it. I don't expect that it's going to go through, but I think it's a strong statement for us to be making, that we shouldn't be testing our kids for seven, eight, eight and a half hours, and that if we can get the same information through, you know, a statistically relevant group of students, we ought to be looking at that as a state. So I guess I'm, I, I don't expect this is gonna change anything, other than strengthening what we're trying to do with this resolution at all, which is to kind of do a protest.
Other than the directing the superintendent to go out and try to figure out what's in this...
Well, she's, she calls, she calls or wrote a letter, and I mean, we direct the superintendent to do stuff all the time, so...
Okay, well, why? Okay, Director Bilal.
I'm just gonna repeat that, I, again, whether you're in support of the idea, that, that's fine. I just think that we have a voice, we can contact the state, we did a resolution this summer, and if we want to use our collective voice, then use our collective voice.
That's what we're doing here, Greg. If you want to, if you want to propose the language to strengthen what that, then propose, I'm open to it, so that's what we're doing here. So I, I don't know what, what you're saying.
I, directing somebody else to deliver the message is the part where I find it weakened.
We, we always do that, though. I mean, the board always directs the superintendent.
So Director, Director Morton, and then let's move to vote on this amendment, please, so we can move forward. Director Morton?
Thank you. So, you know, I'm really curious, if I were to, if I put it into sort of my daily context, and I had something that, that I was wanting to pilot, or wanting to implement within my organization, I think the, and I didn't have an idea of whether or not it was something that was going to be effective, or something that was going to be helpful. Well, first of all, I probably wouldn't move forward with it at all, but, but if there was a, if there was a, if there was a, an intention around, okay, this, this is something, particularly if, I mean, we do things all the time that you have to do because your funders say, "This is an expectation, this is how we're holding you accountable when we give you this resource." So if there's something that a funder is saying here, I don't think it's outside of the realm of possibility, or outside of the, I, what is reasonable to think that a pilot period, particularly one that would essentially cost you less money, could be implemented in a, in a given year that could inform whether or not this was something that was going to be effective for your, for your, sort of, the future, your future programming, your future calendar. So I, I didn't go, I didn't even see the, the email that, that Director Kurlor sent out before we sat down to the meeting today. But now that we're, we're talking about this, I'm, I gotta tell you, I'm really feeling like the, the smart money is on saying, "Why do we have to do this with all students across our district? Why can't we create a sample that allows for us to be informed for our next year?" Greg, I, I really do appreciate your language around, this is a message that we deliver as a board. I, you know, I think we deliver message, well, I'm sure everyone is, is listening now. So we're delivering this message, but, but I think, I think it's important to, to, at the very least, say, "We're being, I think we're being smart about how we invest our resources in things, when, particularly when we don't know, or we don't have the evidence that demonstrates that, in fact, it's going to be effective for us as a district." You can't get that money back if, at the end of that time period, at the end of that pilot, it is not an effective tool for you. That being said, next year, it's gonna be, it's probably gonna be a tool, because again, your, your funder determines those, those things that you, you take action on.
I guess, you know, what I would, you know, what I would suggest would be, that the first part of that would be, "We call on the state to pilot a random, et cetera, et cetera." That's what I would say.
Well, you can offer amendment, because that, that will not be a friendly amendment.
So I just, I just have some ques, I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
First of all, I thought we just finished a pilot, did we not, last year?
Yeah, we participated in field testing it last year, and I don't know.
But we don't have results.
We don't have results.
We have no results, right.
Right. We have no data from it.
And the other question I have regarding a change like this, where we would, if we went to the full step of saying, "We're just gonna do this," not asking you to negotiate with the state about it, but if we just did it, what are the potential ramifications? I mean, Matt's talking about a funder, and they're a funder, so if we say, "We're not gonna do this, we're just gonna give you a random sample," what's, what, what are the ramifications? What could happen? Because I wouldn't want to vote for something like this without knowing what would happen.
They'd say no.
There's a lot of stake.
Yeah, I don't think the res, I don't think the resolution is asking, is saying that we should just not do it. I think it's asking superintendent to confer with the state and say...
I, I think people are talking about both of those things. So I'm, I'm curious, what are the ramifications?
If we just said, "We're not doing it," we just said, "No"?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's what...
Who knows? I know, look at, the crowd goes wild.
Yank our money.
But I think, when the wording is, "We direct the superintendent to work with the state to pilot..."
Ask the question, yeah.
That, that's, that's saying we're expecting that it will happen, that...
Thomas also said that he was willing to take a friendly amendment that said, that takes out work with the superintendent, and is just, so I'm curi, I, I want to know what the ramifications would be. I don't care what the language is, I want to know what would happen if we didn't do this at all.
Well, and also, what's the ramifications for our staff? We're about to go out and start hiring staff for schools, because...
All of these things.
We're talking about another hole there.
I mean, I'm not gonna just willy-nilly decide right here that all, all of a sudden we're not gonna do it without knowing what the ramifications would be.
Exactly.
Right, I, I think that language...
So I'm asking the superintendent if you know.
If I will, well, I mean, this is...
Right. We don't know.
Well, I mean, it, is it, this is from a funder, and it's federal dollars as well as state dollars. Yeah, but you know, the, asking the question, I think, is it being framed here, is different than us just taking, you know, doing a refusal.
I guess I'm not hearing in that language that we're just asking the question.
And, and if you're asking me that question, what are the consequences, I will go learn what the cons, the real consequences are, because we're just assuming.
Right. Director Buell?
Thank you.
Director Knowles, are you talking about if we actually did it without the state's approval, or if we did it with the state's approval? Because there would be different ramifications. Without the state's approval, they'd probably yank our funding. To some degree, they would fine us. With the state's approval, which is what the amendment is, we would have the state's approval, there'd be no ramifications whatsoever for us as a district, because we would have the state's approval, and so they'd have to kind of count it as a wash year on our schools that they're planning to close down the line in a couple of years, or that they're planning to, that they're planning to fire the principal.
As I said, that there was a friendly amendment that was being discussed, and that's why I want to know the ramifications, so...
Yeah, that's, that's what would happen.
And that's a question to me, to find out what the ramifications would be.
So I guess I'm still trying to understand the intent of the wording, because I'm not seeing it as raising the, if it's raising the question with the state, or calling on the state, absolutely, I support that. But if it's directing the superintendent to pilot...
No, what's the, what's the language?
You're asking me to call the state and ask a question.
Okay, "We direct the superintendent to work with the state of Oregon to pilot..."
Yeah, work with the state, so it's not saying we're gonna just not test, or saying work with the state.
Okay, if that's, if that's what the intent, that wording isn't clear to me, but if that's what everyone understands the intent is, that you're asking the question?
Make that clear, make that, let's make that clear.
I think that could be made more clear.
Requesting.
Okay, "We direct the superintendent to request..."
There you go.
"...the state of Oregon to pilot a random stat," okay, that's very different to me. So are you hearing, what I'm hearing in that is, the superintendent makes the ask to the state and reports back to us, obviously.
Called, says, "The board has asked me to request that."
Okay.
Exactly.
So we direct, so the amendment now is, "We direct the superintendent to request the state of Oregon to pilot a random statistical valid sample of the SBACK test this year in lieu of the existing testing regime."
Yeah.
Okay.
Sounds good.
So that's, are, Tom's nodding, is that acceptable as the wording to you? Okay. So all in favor, please, of the amendment, please, in favor, saying yes?
Yes.
Any opposed?
No.
No, so the amendment passes with a vote of six to one. All right, great. So now, we have the resolution as amended. Oh, and Karen, did, did that become clear to you in the end, and Roseanne, what we landed on? Okay, thank you very much. All right, so now, if we can go ahead and vote on the resolution number five, zero, four, zero, as amended. Oh, Director Buell.
Now, should I, I have a couple amendments to add. Do you want to do that now, or how do you do that?
This would be the time, because we're about to vote, so go for it.
Okay, there we go. Couple comments first, as I go along here, and then amendment, in C, going down the resolution C, in part C, we talk about that it's, that the state assessment is calling for reduced role of summative assessments. That's not exactly correct. And I don't mind having the language in there, it's not that foreign, somebody could do it, but the language, I'd love to have it correct, but it's, it's okay. Same with D, their states, our assessment group is not reviewing the SBACK, the superintendent made that clear, and we say they are, but they're not reviewing the SBACK. What they're doing is reviewing the whole testing spectrum, but not the SBACK itself per se as a test. We're only counting what tests we're doing. So I don't mind leaving it in here, because it's no big deal, but I just wanted to point that out as we went along. Here we start getting to something that I would like to change. We, on F, section F, it says it's a more challenging assessment. It's not necessarily, it is a more challenging assessment, but it, this is kind of written, it says, "The Portland Public Schools Board continues to support the elimination of the multiple choice Oaks and moving toward a more challenging summative assessment that is just one measurement, excuse me, assessment, that is just one part of an overall program of assessment for learning, for learning." We, but this sounds like we're supporting the SBACK. See what I'm saying? We're supporting a more difficult assessment, and so I would strike the first paragraph as an amendment, and then, what do you want, make them one at a time?
So what, please, so, okay. So your, your amendment is...
Striking the first sentence in section F.
Striking the first sentence in, in recital F. Is there a second?
So what, sorry, so what we would strike is, "The Portland School Board continues to support..."
We're not, we're not supporting more challenging and summative assessment that is just one part of overall program. That's supporting the SBACK. You can't say both things.
Okay, so that's, removing that first sentence in recital F is the motion, the amendment, and is there a second for that? Okay, hearing none. Do you have another amendment?
New bill. On G?
G, okay.
Uh, this is a comment, I'm gonna make a comment on it.
So it's a comment?
The board continues, well, it's a comment that's directed at the whole thing, and we're going to vote on the whole thing, so the comment would be valid. The, the board can, yeah, the discussion would be valid, that's what I'm doing, making a discussion.
So can you just make your amendment, and then we'll discuss it? Will that work?
Yes.
Okay, we can do that, all right, then I gotta go back and double, and do it in your order. Gotta do it in your order. Result one.
Or the, or the order of Robert's rules.
We have to see the test questions. Thank you, Greg.
Just saying. So you're looking at amendment...
Give me your feedback, just a second, I'm gonna give you the amendment, because I'm doing it in your order. Okay, on resolved B?
Wait, I'm sorry, B, as in what?
One B.
Oh, sorry, resolve, one B, got it?
Down at the bottom, one B, resolved, I'd strike B, says, "Provide constructive guidance for schools and students regarding the SBA, the, the smarter balance assessment results, including feedback that will enable students to learn from the test results."
Okay, so you're...
Because we don't, we're not...
Excuse me, just, can you just say that, what, that's what your amendment is, and we'll get it on the table? So your amendment is to strike one B. Is that right? Okay, so the amendment is...
And the re, okay, go ahead.
Thank you. Amendment is to strike one B. Is there a second? So you know a second?
Certainly would like to talk to these.
What is your next amendment, Director Buell? We've actually had quite a bit of discussion and dialogue about this.
I have a second on that one.
So can we move on to your next amendment, please?
Yeah, we can, if there's no second.
Well, I'll, I'll second it, if you want to talk to it.
Thank you, yes, I would.
All right, discussion. Director Buell?
This particular section says that we're asking them to provide constructive guidance for schools and students regarding these results, including feedback that will enable students to learn from the test results. They can't, that's an impossibility. They don't have, they can't give us that feedback.
Then they'll have to tell us that, won't they?
So why are we asking to it? Well, then we should change it to read, to read that we would like to have it, as opposed to the fact that they should provide us feedback. We should say, "No feedback's available, and we would like to have the test set up so we could get feedback." I can make an amendment along that. I'll go for strike, and then I'll come back and make another amendment, and then I'll strike it and make an amendment.
Okay, any other discussion of the amendment to strike resolve one B?
No, other than, I mean, I think this was your, of being responsive to something that Mina might have said.
Yeah, it was. All right, let's now vote on the amendment. All in favor, please, in favor, saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, amendment goes down. Do you have another amendment, Director Buell?
Okay. I'd like to strike C, Portland Public Schools directs its superintendent to...
Wait, I'm sorry, where are you?
C, three C now.
Three C, okay, so recital three C, you want to strike that? Three C, okay, so recital three C, you want to strike that? Is there a second? No second?
Point, point of order.
Yes, sir.
Director Buell, you said you wanted to strike three C, but what I heard you reading is not on my copy of three C, can you clarify?
In sure that time spanned on test.
Thank you, you said something about the superintendent.
Yeah, I was.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I'm sorry, now I've lost my train of thought.
Three C.
Fail, fail, relax.
Okay, all right, so now unless there are any further amendments?
Okay, now I've got the final one.
Okay.
And then I want to go back and talk to the resolution.
All right.
Like that, if you take the page that I have, which is resolution two.
Resolution two.
It's resolution one, resolution two, and if you move the first section, which says Portland School Board directs the superintendent to, which is the same as in three, and you move this to D.
Wait, I'm sorry, you're gonna have to slow down, I'm losing, okay, so the first paragraph.
Take this and make it D.
Take this, resolution two and strike Portland School Board directs superintendent because that language is in there.
Okay, so I strike that.
I set this up as a singular resolution in case it's getting.
So I, okay.
So, and start at a D, bring forth a comprehensive report. So that would become one, that would become three D.
Got you, okay, sorry, I'm slow on the uptake here. So three D, you're moving that there, we would add to the resolution under resolved three, we'd add a new section D that would begin with bring forth a comprehensive report, et cetera, and then from then on.
Yes. And I'm gonna read this for the audience.
For the record, yes, since you did just email it to us today, so good.
So under section three D, it was, which starts out, the Portland Public Schools Board directs the superintendent to, it would say to bring, bring forth a comprehensive report to the school board by July twenty first, 2015, concerning our district's response to the smarter balanced testing. The report should outline the following at a minimum. Implementation steps which were taken to administer the tests. An appraisal of the impact of the testing on children, teachers, and other staff members. An estimate of the time taken by various administrators and teachers in preparing for smarter balance. An estimate of the money spent on delivering the test, including an approximation of district and building administrative costs. A full report on opt-out numbers by school and their effects on the state report cards. Preparation for this report shall be conducted in a manner which attempts to be unbiased and includes positive as well as negative aspects of the smarter balanced testing. Preparation for the report should include school visits and confidential interviews of teachers, students, parents, and administrators, as well as a review of the literature surrounding high stakes testing and Common Core.
Okay, thank you for reading that, is there a second?
Second, now.
Second, the motion is seconded and now discussion. Director Buell.
The S P A C test, which we're not going to get the state, the state to put it back to five percent, though as much as I would like to have them do that. It's incredibly important to what we're doing out in our educational system in this, in this city. And it is all, but what's really important for us is what is it that we are actually doing that in the end we can say, okay, this is what happened? If we're gonna take all this time and energy and money and we're going to spend it out there and we're going to do this testing and we're going to push for it, we're going to do all this, then we need to have a report that says, this is what happened. So the next year, we can actually say, here's the adjustments we need to make to make this test work. Now, I know three of you aren't gonna be around, but I'm gonna be around there in a year from now and I'm gonna want to say, hey, how did it go? And this says you're going to get a comprehensive report. And we're not gonna just get, okay, a couple of people thought this, or we're getting something from the B E S C, which is nice, and I don't have any trouble with that. But I want people out there to talk about, how does this work? How did it work? Should we be, should we as a district be opting out students ourselves? Should we be asking parents to opt out kids? If you know no English, why don't we just ask a parent to opt them out and get them dropped out instead of sticking them on an eight-hour test with no English? If, is this, is this fitting with our equity policy? Does this fit with it? There's, there's literature all over the place that says, no, this does not fit, it does not fit with our equity policy. If we have an equity policy, does it fit? Did it fit? Let's take a look and see what we did and how it worked and see then what changes we need to make. And by asking for this comprehensive report, it directs the superintendent to actually go out and do this in a certain way where we're guaranteed in the end, hopefully, an unbiased, solid report about what took place. It's critical that we do this. If you don't care about what's happening out there in our schools concerning these incredibly disruptive and incredibly influential tests where we're, we're doing this and this and this and all this and we don't care how it comes out? We don't care about the education of our children or how this balances out? Fine, vote against it. But if you care about how this is going to work in our schools and how it's working, then you need to vote for this particular amendment. Thank you.
Other comments?
I'll just say, I mean, I think, Steve, we actually, I think, to me, it's wordsmithing and I'm, I'm willing to, to vote for it. It's also in, in one C, so it's, instead of, how many sentences you've got here, it's done in more precise form. So certainly the intent is.
On one, on one C?
And that, that, thank you.
Well, one C asks the state of Oregon to do it because there's one hundred and ninety-eight districts we're all going through, so it asks the state of Oregon, and, yeah.
Not to, to do just our district.
Okay.
They just want to do whatever they want, there, we've seen how good the state does.
Yeah, and I think, for me, why I didn't include that suggestion that you had made was, you know, A, I don't want our district and our staff to be spending more time and money on this piece. I want this, it's on the state, it's their test, and so that's why the one C is there and that's why I'm hoping that the next board is gonna follow up on this and demand that if they are slow to do that or if they provide something that's inadequate. The other piece too, and I know you disagree with me on this, Director Buell, but I do feel that our own assessment advisory committee can be the place where we have, as they continue with their work, that they are looking at the entire assessment picture. So that's where, where they aren't necessarily doing all the pieces that you're outlining in here. That's something that the board can continue to draw in their expertise and their insight. So to me, this, this amendment puts an onus on our staff at this time, that to me, I think the onus should be on the state and it's onus then on the board to hold this, and the rest of us to hold the state accountable. So that's why I'm not supporting it. Anything else before we, oh, Director Buell?
The onus on the state, we have no control over that. We're stuck with the smarter balanced test, which, if you go out and talk to teacher after teacher after teacher, I think they're about one percent on the last survey that I read about, who think that smarter balance is a good thing. I talked to tons of principals who aren't coming out publicly, but who think the smarter balance is a bad thing. I mean, you can't find people out in our schools who are really encouraging this, so what, and yet we're stuck with it. So we need to look at what our district is doing in relationship to what we're stuck with. And we don't have anything in here like that and you can't, the assessment committee isn't set up to do that. We need one person who goes out, does the interviews, who really studies it, takes a look at it and comes back. Now, you don't want to spend money here, then how can you not want to spend money to find out the, probably the most influential thing in the education of our children right now is the smarter balanced test? But we're not gonna spend a dime to find out if, if it's working or how we're dealing with it? That's craziness. I mean, well, yeah, fine, there's money out there, we can find money, I'll, I'll go find it if you'd like. We can have, my suggestion is that the superintendent actually says, take somebody who, in, in her administration and assigns them this task. Fine, they'll do that instead of something else. This is critically important and what needs to be, and it needs to be done. And I, I want that assessment next year so we can make adjustments to this test in the manner that is best for the children in our school system. And I hate to see people who are not there next year pop that right back on top of us to, now we're gonna do it next year? So we've done a whole year of not making improvements.
Okay, so let's go ahead and vote on the amendment, all in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Roll call, please.
Oh, roll call, please.
Director Kerler?
Yes.
Director Morton?
No.
Director Knowles?
Yeah.
No, no.
Director Belial?
No.
Director Regan?
No.
Director Buell?
Yes.
And Chair Atkins?
No. Okay, so the amendment does not pass. All right, so do you have any, anyone have any further amendments to propose before we move forward? Okay, so now let's go ahead and vote. Thank you all very much.
Thank you for all your workup.
Yeah, you bet. Oh, so additional discussion on the resolution as amended. Director Belial, sorry.
That's okay, I just have a couple of comments. One, I appreciate the testimony today and it is, as we put in our resolution in July, we had advocated for multiple languages for this assessment. And I appreciate, Director Buell, what you're saying, to have a student who doesn't understand English very well to be sitting eight, eight hours in front of a computer screen is ludicrous.
How does that gonna work?
And so I appreciate, like I said, the earlier testimony to say we should be advocating for that at the state level, which we have to some degree. I also want to highlight, somebody else talked about, and it says it in our, this is my favorite part actually of the resolution, is we are opposed to high stakes or punitive state and federal mandated summative assessments. My issue all along with these has been the high stakes, the fact that there are educational questions about what kind of learning it's measuring. Not only that, but it was never designed as an evaluative tool of the instructor. That being said, I know that teachers, having been one, the biggest difference in every group of students is the person standing in front of them. But this tool was not designed to measure the effectiveness of the person in the front of the room. And so to pretend that it's a high stake so that it is evaluative of that, I think is a mistake and so I will continue to have an issue with that aspect of it. Especially, I mean, even when it gets to the point when we begin measuring specialists such as music teachers, art teachers, drama teachers, on whether or not a student has passed their, their English mastery of it. So I just want to highlight that. I, again, appreciate the testimony earlier about the data privacy, I think that is a huge issue and I appreciate Representative Lou Fredericks working on it and I don't think his bill even goes far enough. I think data is going to be a problem and we all know that it's been a problem in some of our biggest and most secure sites. But student data is, with a click of a button, just so easy to access. And I think it's something that I, I hope that we don't have to, and not we, just Portland Public, but schools around the country don't have to have some massive data breach for us to wind up as a country and as a state to, to address that. All that being said, I'm not against smarter balanced assessments without those aspects. You know, when, when multiple choice bubble tests came out, everybody was against bubble tests, I don't fit into a bubble. Now people are against the smarter balance. When portfolios came out, people are like, oh, these are great, but they take so much time and how do you ensure inner rate of reliance? There's always a challenge with whatever assessment you bring and I see this just as a next step. Whether it's pilot phase, whether it's test phase, you know, we're always growing and learning. I would hope that as a system, that's what we want to do, meaning continuing to grow and learn from our next step. And I've also heard people talk about how dangerous it is that this is a corporate reform, which is interesting that I hear teachers, some teachers saying that protecting, in fact, the corporate reforms that they would have fought against in the early nineteen hundreds, that our current education system was Carnegie and Rockefeller investing, saying we can build people just like we build machines. And here we are having those same disagreements about the philosophy of education. And we do try to strike a balance between, are we trying to provide contributing citizens, which means that they are good workers, as well as that creativity, that how do we develop a well-rounded individual that maybe can think outside and/or provide the art that speaks for an entire system or a group of folks with new ideas? I hear people talk about that changing standards is inequitable, our current standards could be inequitable, changing the standards could be inequitable. And my interest is not in the fluctuation of the standards, but it's how do we actually help our students who have historically not been served well to reach those standards, whether they're higher or lower. This Oaks, SIM CAM, smarter balance, Common Core, whatever you want to call them, it's about how do we relate every single day and how do we make ours instruction relevant? And finally, I just want to provide a different narrative about that, I think somebody just called this the most influential thing in education. And I just want to put a shout out to all my students' teachers, or all my kids' teachers, that in no way have I felt that testing has been the most influential thing in their education. And oftentimes, even though if they've spent time practicing on it, you have done an excellent job of continuing to make sure that they are learning well beyond the test and I thank you for that. And I hope that as this board has continued to say, we are not interested in just teaching to the test and I applaud you for your efforts to continue to do both. How do we give them the skills they need and continue to develop great people?
Any other, Director Buell?
Want to amend G.
Oh, you've got an amendment to G, okay.
Want to include this language. At the end, it says, I'm sorry, I'm a little slow on this because I forgot my glasses. To students to review test results as well as the potential negative impact on schools and students as a result and any state imposed sanctions or labels on test results or any inequities which violate our equity policy.
Okay, so you would add to the end of recital G, after the last words, based on test results, or any inequities which violate our equity policy.
Right.
Is there a second? Hearing none, the amendment does not move forward.
Okay, I speak to the whole amendment then? I mean, the whole.
Speak to the whole resolution?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm not going to vote for this because do you have an equity policy in this district? And that equity policy, we take seriously. It's an incredibly serious policy. And yet we're willing to sit and give this test and not in any way even take a look to see if it violates our equity policy, which it clearly does. And there's all sorts of literature out there talking about this. Two of the best educators in the country, Brian Jones and Jesse Hagopian, both speak to this S P A C test as being incredibly inequitable. And that it's, that it's really destructive for students of color and it creates extra problems for those students in the educational system. So we're just, we're, we've got an equity policy, oh, a great little equity policy here, but we're not willing to look at this. We're not willing to study it and let the, have the, and have the superintendent look at whether it violates our equity policy or not as we go through the process. We're not for that. We just got an equity policy that we just talk about. Oh, yes, we have a nice equity policy. We have the little equity cards, but when it comes down to doing real equity, we don't seem to have it. And this is a place we could be talking about equity cards and we're not doing it. I mean, this is a place we could be talking about equity and we're not doing it. So please, please, don't, those of you who are still on the board for the next couple, three months, please don't let me hear you talk about equity. And I, really, don't, don't talk about it because this violates our equity policy so badly, it's unbelievable. And people who've studied this and looked at it, who are not just kind of going, oh, this is great, this is really nice, but are actually looking at it, will find that it does violate that equity policy. And I'm not gonna vote for it because it does violate our equity policy as far as I can see.
Okay, so Director Buell, state any other comments before we vote? Okay, so we will now vote on resolution number five zero four zero as amended, all in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Roll call, please.
With a roll call, please?
Director Kerler?
Yes.
Director Morton?
Yes.
Director Knowles?
Yes.
Director Regan?
Yes.
Director Belial?
No.
Director Buell?
No.
And Chair Atkins?
Yes. So, resolution number five zero five zero, five zero four zero is approved by a vote of five to two. And thank you, everyone, for the spirited debate and all your input and to the public for all of their comments as well. And, okay, so, from our lips to the state's ears, right? And, all right, business agenda is the final item on our agenda. So we're gonna now consider the remaining items on our business agenda, having already voted on resolutions five zero three nine and five zero four zero. And just to want to point out, the resolution five zero four one in the business agenda is the one that's going to allow the issuance of additional capital improvement bonds for our schools and that was something we'd previously reviewed and it's very exciting to move forward on that. So Ms. Houston, are there any changes?
No.
And any public comment?
Yes, one.
Oh, excuse me, we gotta wait first, sorry, I jumped ahead of myself. So there are no changes. Do I have a motion and a second to adopt the business agenda?
Second.
Director Belial moves and Director Morton seconds the adoption of the business agenda. And now, public comment?
Yes, we have one. Joe Purkey?
Great, thank you, come on down.
Segregate out the resolution we just voted against.
Let's have this comment and then we'll.
Later, as we go, can we segregate that out, please?
It's not included in the business agenda. We've already voted on it. I'm sorry, let's get to Mr. Purkey's comment and then we'll discuss that. Thank you, let's go ahead.
My name is Joseph Purkey, P U R K.
My name is Joseph Purkey, P-U-R-K-E-Y. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of Community and Parents for Public Schools, CPPS, about the bond issuance vote. We, just as a housekeeping thing, we recently expanded to include members and the mission of our Portland, our schools. We are supportive of the bond sale, and want to say, "Hooray" for this extremely, for the extremely low interest rates that we'll be going out under. You prudently budgeted for selling at higher rates, so this sale will mean taxpayers paying less for these improvements to our schools. While this is perhaps not the most glamorous thing happening in the district right now, it does affect all taxpayers, and people are paying attention. This is a very positive situation, and your planning and, and good luck are noticed and appreciated. So, thank you.
Thank you, very much.
I wanted to quick, make a quick mention also, I hope you're all still thinking individually, and starting to talk as a board about what it might mean, what it will mean, to have a guiding educational vision for the district. We look forward to having that conversation with you, and helping to start that process to develop an educational vision for Portland Public Schools. Thank you.
Thank you, very much. Okay, so is there any discussion, board discussion on the business agenda? So, we have already voted on-
As long as it says, "Including the business agenda," and then fine.
Well, as I said, we've, having already voted on resolutions five zero three nine and five zero four zero, we're now considering the remaining items.
Great, thank you.
Okay? All right, so, all in favor of the business agenda, please indicate by saying yes?
Yes.
Yes. Any opposed, or any abstentions? I'm sorry, Director Buell, you voted yes? Okay, so, business agenda is approved by a vote of seven to zero. Okay, so the next meeting of the board will be held on Tuesday, March thirty first, this meeting is adjourned.